You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting.
You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting.
You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting.
You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting.
You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting.
You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting.
You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting.
You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting. You can report.
You guys don't have to come during the last meeting.
All right, everyone.
All right, we're ready to get started here. Here we go. All right, it is 2:10 PM on this Tuesday, May 27, 2025, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Clerk Woodley, would you please do roll call? Yes, Madam President. Trustee Hall?
Present.
Vice President Mayberry?
Here.
Trustee Dr. Nicolet?
Good afternoon.
Trustee Phoenix?
Present.
President Smith?
Here.
Trustee Westlake?
Here.
Clerk Woodley here. Trustee Student Batavia?
Here.
All present accounted for, ma'am. Wonderful, wonderful. All right, we are going to talk a little bit more about the reason why she's here, but we have a very special guest out in our audience, the Chair of the Washoe County Commission and the Chair of the Regional Transportation Commission, Alexis Hill. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Chair Hill. That brings us now to item 1.04, our land acknowledgment. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgment are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nu'mu Northern Paiute, Ni'wi Western Shoshone, and Nu'wu Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. That closes item 1.04 in Section 1 in its entirety, and we'll move on now to Section 2, our items for consent. I have not received any notice from anyone for pulling an item. Is there an item?
My apologies, but I would like us to talk about 2.04 for just a moment because of the importance.
Oh, and we are, so we have our guests there, and we're not, well, we can pull it if you want to.
No, I just wanted to make sure I could make a comment.
You absolutely can, okay. So we won't be pulling that, so I don't believe we have any items that we'll pull. And so now we'll go into discussion for this item. And now is a very good time to explain when I said that we would talk more about Chair Hill and some of the wonderful people that she's here with us. We would, in our general discussion, like to bring attention to item 2.04, which is truly a groundbreaking opportunity for our children. And so I know that you'll be doing public comment, but for a moment, if you wouldn't mind standing when I give your name, I'd like us all to welcome the Chair of the Washoe County Commission and the Chair of the Regional Transportation Commission, Alexis Hill. Joined also, yes, joined also by the RTC Executive Director, Bill Thomas, and also the RTC Director of Public Transportation and Operations, Jim Gee. And I believe that our guests have some public comment when we get to that point, and then we have many other celebrations still to come, potentially on the other side of us adopting this MOU. Thank you so much. Trustee Westlake, would you like to make your comments on that item?
Thank you, President Smith. I just wanted to make sure that the public understands what a generous gift and opportunity this is for our families and our children. Families these days are very stressed, a lot are struggling. Kids don't have the transportation they need to navigate around our county and our cities, and I just think this is an amazing, amazing thing that RTC is doing for our communities. And I know I appreciate it, and I'm sure all of the other trustees do also. This is amazing. Thank you.
I agree. This item is a really special opportunity to also educate our young people about public transportation. This is a very common thing you find in other metropolitan areas, other communities. This teaches our kids how to use the bus, how to get around town. It gives them autonomy and freedom and helps them learn how to become responsible young people and then eventually adults in our community as well.
All right, everyone. All right, we're ready to get started here. Here we go. All right, it is 2:10 PM on this Tuesday, May 27th, 2025, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Clerk Woodley, would you please do roll call?
Yes, Madam President. Trustee Hall.
Present.
Vice President Mayberry.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Nicolet.
Good afternoon.
Trustee Phoenix.
Present.
President Smith. Trustee Westlake.
Here.
Clerk Woodley here. Trustee Student Batavia. All present accounted for, ma'am.
Wonderful, wonderful. All right, we are going to talk a little bit more about the reason why she's here, but we have a very special guest out in our audience, the Chair of the Washoe County Commission and the Chair of the Regional Transportation Commission. Alexis Hill, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Chair Hill. That brings us now to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nu Mu Northern Paiute, Niwi Western Shoshone, and Nu Wu Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. That closes item 1.04 in Section 1 in its entirety, and we'll move on now to Section 2, our items for consent. I have not received any notice from anyone for pulling an item. Is there, is there an item?
My apologies, but I would like us to talk about 2.04 for just a moment because of the importance.
Oh, and we are, so we have our guests there, and we're not, well, we can pull it if you want to.
No, I just wanted to make sure I could make a comment.
You absolutely can, okay. So we won't be pulling that, so I don't believe we have any items that we'll pull. And so now we'll go to discussion for this item. And now is a very good time to explain when I said that we would talk more about Chair Hill and some of the wonderful people that she's here with us. We would, in our general discussion, like to bring attention to item 2.04, which is truly a groundbreaking opportunity for our children. And so I know that you'll be doing public comment, but for a moment, if you wouldn't mind standing when I give your name, I'd like us all to welcome the Chair of the Washoe County Commission and the Chair of the Regional Transportation Commission, Alexis Hill. Joined also, yes, joined also by the RTC Executive Director, Bill Thomas, and also the RTC Director of Public Transportation and Operations, Jim Gee. And I believe that our guests have some public comment when we get to that point, and then we have many other celebrations still to come, potentially on the other side of us adopting this MOU. Thank you so much. Trustee Westlake, would you like to make your comments on that item?
Thank you, President Smith. I just wanted to make sure that the public understands what a generous gift and opportunity this is for our families and our children. Families these days are very stressed, a lot are struggling. Kids don't have the transportation they need to navigate around our county and our cities, and I just think this is an amazing, amazing thing that RTC is doing for our communities. And I know I appreciate it, and I'm sure all of, all of the other trustees do also. This is amazing. Thank you.
I agree, this item is a really special opportunity to also educate our young people about public transportation. This is a very common thing you find in other metropolitan areas, other communities. This teaches our kids how to use the bus, how to get around town. It gives them autonomy and freedom and helps them learn how to become responsible young people and then eventually adults in our community as well. And so I am completely thrilled for this. I know that we have other exciting moments to celebrate it coming in the future, but also wanted to personally say thank you so much for all that you've done. You've demonstrated a generosity and partnership that truly humbles us, and we thank you so much on behalf of our kids and our team. Okay, well, we have to do the public comment. All right, seeing no other lights on for general comment on consent, JJ, who are we welcoming up?
Alexis Hill.
There we go. We have Chair Hill with us here for public comment.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, President Smith and trustees. It's an honor to be before you today. Washoe County Transportation, or RTC, has been working on a pilot program over the last summer for kids riding free. We saw that kids needed access to food when school is not in session, and we wanted to see how we could get them to locations throughout the county, at all of our libraries, many parks around town, where their parents can't necessarily take them so that they can have their lunches during the day. We saw a great success with this program and wanted to continue it on. Your team has been incredible collaborating with them. We will work with each Washoe County School District student to make sure that they have access to the buses, and then we will also be able to track how much they use this resource so we have a better idea of how many kids are riding the bus and what they're riding the bus and when they're riding the bus to. So it's an exciting day for us to finally collaborate on this program, and we want to help you with your absentee issues as well. When we heard the community was tackling this and the trustees were working so hard on this, and we saw that transportation is one of the largest barriers, we thought, okay, we can't necessarily pick up all the school bus routes today, maybe in the future, but we can help those kids access the bus and maybe on the weekends, go to the mall on the bus. And like you had talked about, that independence that we want to see kids have. So thank you for this opportunity, and it's an honor to partner with you, and I can't wait to see what this next year brings about.
Thank you so much. We're so incredibly grateful to you. This is how a community stands together in support of young people and their education. It takes a village, and we're so grateful for RTC for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
The board received an email from Katie Simon-Holland.
Very good. All right, Clerk Woodley, I think you called dibs.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. I move that the Board of Trustees approves consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.17.
All right, we have a motion by Clerk Woodley. We have a second by Trustee Hall. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you so much. So that closes Section 2 in its entirety. I will not be opening Section 3 immediately. We are actually going to go ahead and move to opening Section 4, our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. We will be doing one item from this section first, and that is item 4.01. This is the presentation and discussion of the Washoe County School District School Police Department's Junior Cadet Program, including the program's structure, goals, leadership service, and public safety experiences offered to participating students from schools throughout the district. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. We have a wonderful lineup here, and I know Chief Moore will also be introducing everyone, but we do have with us our Chief of School Police, Tracy Moore, joined also by Officer Gomez, Detective Flurry of our school police, and then also Cadets Narvinder Cologne, and Olivia Keller, and Arlette Luna Gonzalez.
Perfect. Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and trustees. I'm honored to be here in front of you as your Chief of Police and introduce your, tell you about our program for our junior police cadets. This is a program that works under Sergeant Lorenzen's leadership. These students, this is a perfect opportunity for them to explore a opportunity in law enforcement as a career. They develop some leadership skills throughout this program, and it's a good opportunity for them to give back to our community. During this program, they receive hands-on training about law enforcement activities that we do. They learn about laws, they get to drive police cars, they get to go to the shooting range. But they've had also a recent adventure, I'll let you tell about that. They did go back to Washington DC, all on the funding that they raised as students in this school district to go back to that Washington DC National Police Officer Week. So Sergeant Lorenzen, he oversees this program, but I think I'm going to introduce to you is going to be Officer Gomez, who's going to introduce to you the students within the school district. And also, kudos to Detective Flurry too. Those two have spent countless hours of, you know, leading this program. So, thank you, team members.
Welcome. Sounds good to us.
Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and members of the board of trustees. My name is Jesus Gomez. I'm here today alongside-
Detective Quentin Flurry.
Arlette Luna from Hug High School.
Narvinder Cologne from North Valleys High School.
Olivia Keller from Bonnie Ranch High School.
Okay, oh, I forgot. There was one little mention that I wanted to say real quick. Just want to say thank you to Chief Moore and Deputy Chief Baker for their continued support of the program, and Ms. Julie Kemp for all of her help throughout the year. We also wanted to say thank you to Sergeant Lorenzen for all of his support, work, and dedication he has poured into this program. Without him, none of this would have been possible. I know our time is limited, so I'll be moving quickly through the slides. We believe the best way to truly understand the impact of this program is by hearing directly from the students themselves. Their personal stories are powerful, and we want to give them time to share their experiences with you today. Okay, let's see. Okay. So, the program history. The School Police Junior Cadet Program began as the Police Explorers Program nearly 20 years ago. Since then, many students who participated have gone on to become officers, dispatchers, and dispatchers serving throughout our community and within our agency. In fact, we currently have several officers and also had a dispatcher who started out as cadets in this very program. Program objectives. The mission of the Junior Cadet Program is to educate students not only about the history of law enforcement in our country, but also about the evolving practices in the field. Our goal is to develop critical thinkers and problem solvers, young adults who grow in confidence as they prepare to lead with their communities, within their communities. We focus on teaching skills that are valuable both personally and professionally so that whether students pursue a career in law enforcement or choose a different path, they're equipped to succeed in life. Some of the benefits of the Junior Cadet Program. Students who complete this course gain a number of benefits. It strengthens their resumes and stands out on college applications by demonstrating leadership and meaningful community involvement. More importantly, they build real professional connections with local and state officials. These students here have been able to meet face-to-face with officers, sergeants, chiefs, and even Nevada State Senators, as well as their staffers. One who actually graduated from Reno High School and knew the school police officer, Officer Webb, during her time here. The program offers a clear pathway into law enforcement, exposing students to academy-level content and giving them a head start compared to new recruits. But beyond that, it empowers them, building confidence, real-world skills, and a sense of purpose. One additional advantage is that the students earn extended studies credit, which counts towards their high school diploma. And if you could please all take a look at the last bulletin and just make a mental note about it. This program helps foster trust and mentorship between students and school police. You'll see all of these elements come to life as the students share their stories today. Here, you can see a few examples of the curriculum we cover in class. I want to highlight the CPR and bleeding control training we offer in partnership with Leslie Alphrey. She's our district's Student Health Services Coordinator. Through this collaboration, students receive official certifications enhancing both their resumes, resumes, and their real-life skills. Again, some of the program goals. One of the greatest outcomes of this program is the meaningful relationships it builds among cadets and between students and school police. These bonds continue beyond high school as we encourage the cadets to stay involved in our program and department through volunteer opportunities and then in the future internships. A major goal of this program is to fully prepare students for the police academy. We aim to equip them with the knowledge, experience, and confidence they need so that when the time comes, they're ready to step in those roles seamlessly. Even more importantly, we're working toward, we're working toward creating a homegrown police force. Officers who reflect the community they serve, understand the unique needs of our district, and are committed to serving with empathy and professionalism. I went over that one. As we look to the future, we're currently reviewing applications for next school year's Junior Cadet class. Registration is open. Interested can talk to their counselors or visit the WCSD PD website where they can navigate to the Junior Cadet section to learn more. And then if you click on the picture, it should have a hyperlink. I've had a passion about law enforcement since I was, I want to say, around seven or eight years old. And I like how they go and help the community, right, with no wants of recognition. They have a passion to help other people with no ego at all.
The Junior Cadet Program has been with our department for years and years. It formerly was Police Explorers, and it changed over to Junior Cadets. Over the years, we've had many, many people that have left our program, gone to school, and become law enforcement officers. We have people at Sparks, Reno here, dispatchers. I think we have a couple lawyers, the criminal defense lawyers, I believe, that have gone through the program that just got the taste of what law enforcement's about.
I started as a freshman all the way through my senior year. I was a student at Spanish Springs High School. So I did that for the four years, sticking with it for the four years, gave a big eye-opener to what we could do in the future. You get to go hands-on with the officers that are teaching you and go see their day-to-day and experience what they get to do.
So one at a time, I'm going to run you guys through the approach. We need the rhythm, we need like the sequence.
They're able to see and do exactly what we do. We break down that wall between police officers, the community, and the school district, and we put them on the same level as us to be able to experience that for themselves, which gives them the best ideas to whether or not this is a career path for them that they want to choose.
Well, so far, it's been amazing. We learn new things every day, so it's like, I'm never like bored or anything, and like, it just makes me want to keep like going into this career path, you know? Since right now, we're learning about radio communication and also how like to like to traffic stop, which like really has me interested right now. It like really changes like a perspective on things, you know?
Talking to my guy, here's your license, I've been giving you your road report.
If they are trying to become police officers, it shows them a little glimpse of what it is. They start off shy, you get to see them grow as an individual. They evolve as, as people. That's the best part about it, seeing them grow.
Had a different hairstyle back then.
I've had a passion about law- I'm gonna turn it over now to Narvinder, because I truly feel like it's more powerful to hear from them, their stories and everything that they learned this year.
Thank you. Hello and good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Narvinder St. Connell, and I am currently a senior at North Valleys High School. I would like to begin my, by expressing my deepest gratitude to Officer Gomez, Detective Flurry, and Sergeant Lorenzen. Without their membership, support, and commitment to this program, I would not be standing here today without the confidence and purpose I've gained over the past year. They've helped shape who I am as both a student and hopefully, future member of law enforcement. At the end of my junior year, I received a group email from my JROTC Colonel. It was my final day in the program. I wasn't sure what the next chapter would look like until I opened that email. Inside was a short introduction to a new law enforcement class, a PowerPoint explaining the curriculum. Right away, I was hooked. I contacted my counselor, and just a few weeks later, I was officially enrolled. But my passion for law enforcement didn't begin there. It started much earlier. When I was just eight years old, I had my first encounter with a police officer at a local community event. It was one of those family-friendly gatherings where first responders came out with their vehicles to interact with the public. I remember being drawn to the flashing red and blue lights, the sound of the sirens, and the way the officers carried themselves. Something about that experience stuck with me. From that day on, I knew I wanted to pursue a career that was exciting, meaningful, and gave me the opportunity to serve others. This program has helped bring my younger dreams to life. Over the past year, I've gained valuable knowledge about policing from learning the basics of law enforcement procedures and firearm safety to developing critical communication and social skills. We spent countless hours learning the ten codes and mastering radio procedures, which were the foundation for almost everything we did. Those lessons weren't just theoretical, they came into use in real life. About five months into the program, my car was involved in a semi-hit-and-run accident. Because of what I've learned, I was able to recall the license plate and give a detailed description of the vehicle. I used that information to locate the car from a nearby security footage and identify the driver. Thanks to the skill I have developed in this class, I was able to get the situation resolved and receive the insurance information. Without this program, I honestly don't believe I would have been able to handle the situation the same way. This class has done more than me than just, has done more for me than just prepare for a future in law enforcement. It's helped me grow as a person. I still struggle with public speaking and face-to-face conversations. Like many people my age, I relied more on texting and social media than real-world interactions. But through this program, I've developed confidence. I've learned how to present myself professionally, I've had to speak clearly, and how to hold a conversation without stuttering or second-guessing myself too often. These are skills that I will carry for the rest of my life regardless of what career path I follow. Most importantly, I found a second family in this program. The friendships and bond we've built between cadets and officers alike are genuine and lasting. It is a place where I felt safe, supported, and understood. There was never a dull or wasted day. Whether we were learning new procedures, practicing drills, or volunteering in the community, we were always doing something meaningful. Speaking of community service, we've been out there doing real work, knocking on doors, raising awareness about our program, and gathering funds for our trip. One of the biggest accomplishments was raising enough money to attend Police Week in Washington DC. That trip was one of the most powerful experiences in my life. We attended a candlelight vigil to honor fallen officers from the last year, and we learned firsthand about the sacrifices law enforcement officers make every day. It was a somber, humbling, and unforgettable experience, and I hope future students get the same opportunity as well. To close this, I want to say thanks to this program. It has truly changed my life. It is not just a class, it is a launchpad. I've gained knowledge, confidence, purpose, and connections that will last longer after I graduate. I want to once again thank Officer Gomez, Detective Flurry, and Sergeant Lorenzen for their membership. And I want to thank you, the members of the school board, for taking the time to hear my story and support programs like these. They matter more than you know. Thank you. I would now like to pass our story to Arlette.
Thank you.
We'll give you a round of applause. I don't know, Narvinder, for someone who says that this was not natural to you, I think that you just presented very, very well to this, to this body and to the whole community. So congratulations.
Hello, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and members of the, members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Arlette Luna. I am a senior at Hug High School graduating this year. It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you guys today about the Police Cadet Program. I will start off how I found about this, found out about this program. It started when I impressed, expressed interest in law enforcement to my forensic teacher, specifically wanting to be an undercover cop. It was then when Ms. Hanson mentioned this program. She printed out a PowerPoint that explained what the program was all about and helped me with the signup process. She always encouraged me and never gave up on me trying to get ahold of Officer Gomez so that I could have the opportunity of joining this class. Law enforcement has always been a career I've wanted to pursue. Movies are what sparked my interest in law enforcement, seeing how brave police officers are and how they always put others first. My brother had always, has also had an interest in law enforcement growing up and joined the Sparks Explorer Program. He shared his experience and what he learned with me, and it really encouraged me to follow that path. He is now in the military and continues to inspire me to follow what I'm interested in. What this program has taught me is the basics of policing as well as the importance of doing things a certain way and order. We were able to have many hands-on experiences that helped me think about things in a different way. We had scenarios that challenged my thinking since I don't know what to expect, so I had to try and be ready for whatever they threw at us. This program has not, has not only taught us about policing, but life lessons and skills. I learned that you must truly work hard for what you want. I gained confidence in myself by learning how to deal with problems. My communication skills have also been improved since I do consider myself a shy person. I believe I have gained an important life lesson. This program has been more than just an after-school class. It feels like this class is my other family. I would always look forward to going every week. The connections and bonds we have made with each other are strong. I have always felt safe and comfortable knowing I can be myself around my team. We've also learned how to give back to our community and how to give ourselves, and how to get ourselves out there. We have participated in some police-related events. For example, Evening in Blue and the Nevada Day Parade. This has helped me see how much our community appreciates our officers. The trip to Washington DC, Philadelphia, New York has been one of the best trips I've ever, I've had the opportunity to earn. We worked very hard to make this trip possible from knocking door to door, telling people about our program, and we also did many fundraisers. The trip was a one-in-a-lifetime experience. We got to see many historical pieces and places that were very touching. We went to the candlelight vigil and the wall of all the names of the fallen police officers. It was really touching to see how the families of these officers are still proud of them, and the way they spoke of them is just a feeling you can't explain. One of my favorite parts of the trip was touring the FBI building. I really enjoyed seeing what they do, the training they go through, and the equipment they use. It made me really excited to continue learning about this career. I am beyond grateful for this program and for everything it has taught me. I love this program and would love to, and would love to do more years if I could. I am truly grateful for Ms. Hanson for introducing me to this opportunity. I am also grateful for Officer Gomez, Detective Flurry, and Sergeant Lorenzen for making this program and trip so meaningful. They have always been committed to this program and have done their best to teach us, explain to us, and provide a lot of hands-on experience. They are amazing officers and teachers, and for that, I thank them. I also want to thank my cadet team for always- I also want to thank my cadet team for always being there and making, making, working together fun. I appreciate the bonds we made and I couldn't thank them enough for making this experience amazing. It wouldn't be the same without them. Thank you.
Oh, wonderful job, Arlette. I love the way that you explained the community and the family that you found with the cadets. That really touched me. Hi, Olivia.
Hi. Hello, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst and members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Olivia and I'm a senior at Demonty Ranch High School. I first heard about the junior cadet program at the end of my junior year from my forensic science teacher. We were able to talk with the officers about joining the program and what it would entail. And let me tell you, I'm so glad that I ended up joining. Before this class, there would be absolutely no way that I would be able to talk to you like I am today. I have gained so much confidence from this class. It has taught me leadership skills, how to talk to people, how to be a, how to be confident in who I am and so much more. I've really grown as a person, going from crying every day at kindergarten drop-off to being able to walk up to anyone and start a conversation. This is truly all thanks to this class. My parents and friends have noticed a difference in the way I carry myself and present myself as well. In this class, we're treated like adults and this has helped us all to feel comfortable, confident and respected. There isn't much that we haven't learned in this class. The PowerPoints we go over are pulled straight from the police academy, so we will have a head start above other recruits. We learn all the ten codes, phonetic alphabet, Nevada laws and more. We then apply these things with hands-on training. We go through scenarios where we will talk to dispatch using all the codes and then make an arrest based on the laws that we have learned. This really helps us to understand exactly what the job will be like and what are some possible things we could expect to encounter in the future. We went to the EVOC track and had an opportunity to learn driving maneuvers that officers use while on the job. I'm not gonna lie, that was really cool. We were also able to step onto a real firing range at the Regional Training Center and learn how to properly handle firearms. Throughout this program, we have also been able to complete community service hours that eventually led us to our goal of visiting Washington, DC for National Police Week. We spent an entire week experiencing history. We looked at countless monuments and heard stories about them and what they symbolize in our country's history. The biggest reason to go on that trip however, was to honor the fallen officers around the nation. We were able to participate in the candlelight vigil. It was pouring rain, but we had to experience this incredible moment of solidarity and support. The names of fallen officers were read and a single flame spread across the crowd as we all lit candles for the officers that had sacrificed their lives for us. We went to the police memorial wall where the names of every fallen officer were carved. A few of our cadets got to meet officers and families from all over the US and hear their stories about their families and friends whose names are on that wall. This made us realize how fragile life is and what those officers put on the line to help protect and serve their communities. I will always be so incredibly grateful that I was able to be a part of this program, the opportunity to experience something I never knew I needed in my life, a program that has helped me grow as a person, to see that I matter in a world where people aren't always given a place to grow, to be seen as a valuable member of a group and to feel support from the instructors who gave me a place where I feel I belong and will continue on the path to law enforcement. I will remain grateful. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So real quick, so all of the students, when we went to Washington, DC for Police Week, they had, there was an assignment that was a, that we asked of. So all of the students, they have to do an essay based on a police officer that was fallen and they have to do all the research on them. So I'm gonna let Olivia, if it's okay with you guys, just read her essay that she ended up doing.
So my essay is about Officer Kevin E. Ambrose from the Springfield, Massachusetts Police Department. At the law enforcement officer memorial, I was not sure how to pick a name. It felt disrespectful and overwhelming to just pick a random name without knowing what that officer sacrificed for us. This is when I was approached by a police officer from the Springfield, Massachusetts Police Department, Paul. He wanted to help me find a name and give me the officer's story. I was so grateful for this because I didn't know how to approach such an important memorial with the respect they deserved. He went and wrote down some names and where they were located. He helped me choose a name to rub on my paper and then proceeded to tell me the officer's story, who actually ended up being one of Paul's good friends. Officer Kevin E. Ambrose, a fifty-eight, or a fifty-five-year-old Springfield, Massachusetts police officer. His end of watch was Monday, June 4th, 2012. He was shot and killed while responding to reports of a domestic disturbance at the Lawton Arms Apartments in Springfield shortly before 1:00 PM. A woman called 911 to report her boyfriend at the apartment. She had a restraining order against him and she stated that she was in fear for her life. Officer Ambrose arrived at the scene and spoke to the two outside the apartment. The restraining order stated that the male was allowed to enter the house to retrieve his belongings. Officer Ambrose escorted the two to the apartment on the third floor. When they opened the door, the male suddenly turned violent, grabbed the female and pulled her into the apartment slamming the door. Officer Ambrose attempted to push the door open to get into the, into the apartment. During this, the male subject fired a handgun through the door hitting Officer Ambrose. The male subject then opened the door and shot Officer Ambrose again. He then shot the female, wounding her, then ran to his car and committed suicide. The other officers arrived at the scene and located Officer Ambrose and the female. They immediately began CPR. Both were transported to the hospital where Officer Ambrose succumbed to his wounds. Officer Ambrose served with the Springfield Police Department for thirty-six years until the age of fifty-five. He previously served as a police cadet for two years. He received numerous commendations in nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen ninety-three, nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and five. He is survived by his wife, two children, granddaughter, siblings and many more extended family members. He was more than just a police officer. He was a man who loved sports. He was a member of the police golf league, enjoyed watching teams like the New England Patriots, Boston Red Sox, Bruins and Celtics, and he coached youth soccer, baseball and basketball for many years. He received a degree in criminal justice and quickly started his career in law enforcement as a cadet in nineteen seventy-four and became a police officer in nineteen seventy-six. He worked in squads A, C and B in the records division and in the traffic and detective bureaus. He protected and served his community until his last breath. What I can tell you about the experience of learning about Officer Ambrose is that I connected with the memory of this man like I knew him personally. He was a man with a family, with a community who loved him, who gave his life protecting and serving. I feel grateful to know his story, to know that men like Officer Ambrose are out there protecting the innocent and giving their lives in the pursuit of safety and justice. I will never forget what I learned about this man. He is now a part of my story, a part of what I know about being a police officer and a brave human. Officer Kevin Ambrose is a hero.
That's beautiful, Olivia. I felt like I know who he was through the beauty of your writing and capturing his spirit. This is an, I don't know, do you have more to share? Because this is just-
No, that's just one little snippet. You should, we have other cadets that, so there was one instance where other cadets, they met with the fallen officers' direct team and after talking to them, the, the family, the mom and dad of that fallen officer, they were there and they arrived and they got to experience that and, you know, have those personal conversations, contacts and stuff. And it was very, very powerful for, for the students, so.
So I know we are gonna do a photo, but before we do that, just some, some comments. Your program is amazing. I highly recommend any of my colleagues that have not gone to one of your classes. So I was able to attend with my boys. We watched them clearing the building, the ability that you had working in unison, demonstrating those skills. I just thought this is such a remarkable program. I would also say that I think I speak on behalf of all of us when we also volunteer for the police driving lesson. We could maybe put that under professional development. I think that sounds great. But can one of you tell us how much money did you raise to go on this trip and how did you raise that money?
Sixteen?
Seventeen thousand.
Around seventeen thousand dollars and that was raised from all of us. It was just us going around promoting our program and yeah.
That's wonderful. I think I'm having some feedback, sorry. I, I am the daughter of a Reno police officer and so I am truly humbled. Officer Hashimoto and Officer Bohatch were very good friends of our family. And I just want to say that I really appreciate the assignment that you gave them because our community has always done an incredible job of learning about the lives of the fallen officers and doing something better for our community. My, my dad was actually one of the founders of the Hashimoto Golf Tournament, which serves our fallen officers, the Widows and Orphans Fund. And then we have Bohatch School, which our local law enforcement has done an incredible job yearly. They all come out and have a really cool day with the students at Bohatch. And so I just encourage you to continue that assignment because learning about the people behind those names on that wall, which I have also etched on a piece of paper and it's incredibly moving and I'm so glad you all had that experience. The only other thing I just want to say is the skills, that it's very clear that you've all learned, to be able to come and speak to us today, I, I am, I'm so honored that you are, are open to doing that and you feel confident in doing that and I can't wait to see you all with a badge very soon. So thank you, thank you.
Alrighty, hey, that was awesome. That was extremely awesome. First of all, I'd like to thank the district for keeping this legacy going for how many years now? Twenty-something, keeping it going? Alright, that is so, that is great. And you can see how the input comes back from the community when you start early and you come back and you want to serve. And I heard that many times about serving your community and going out there and fundraising and serving the district and doing all those good things like that. Professionalism, I heard that. And that story that you gave respect for that officer, that fallen officer and the time you took to listen to that story, that was somebody's family, you know? And that's very meaningful and very impactful. That was a, a, a great way to show and demonstrate excellence and it has, it ties into our strategic plan and our pillars. So thank you, PD, for doing that. And thank you, students, for coming up there and stepping up and leading the way. So that's what I wanted to share with you guys today. Thank you.
I'll be brief. I just want to, again, let you know how proud we are of you. And so I do have a question for our students. How many miles over the speed limit can you go without being ticketed?
It's definitely zero.
Good answer. Good answer. I'm just bringing some levity. Thank you all. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we're gonna get up here and take a photo with these wonderful students and just officers, thank you so much. Officers, detectives, sergeant, the fact that you are doing this work, you are showing this community what grow your own looks like. So thank you so much for the time you put into these students and the legacy of the Washoe County School District Police Department. So thank you. Wonderful work. Alright. Alright, everybody, we're gonna bring it back here and that closes item 4.01 and we will pause on continuing through section four. And I'm gonna go back and open section three. These are our finance items. And we have one item today in this section, item 3.01. Presentation, discussion and public hearing on the fiscal year 2025-26 tentative budget for all district funds, possible action to approve staff recommendations in the following areas for the fiscal year 2025-26 budget. One, workers' compensation rate reduction. Two, facility use fees. Three, reduction of the general fund contingency account. And four, relocation of leased spaces. Authorization of continued analysis in the academic area. Review fiscal analyses of prior board requests. Possible action to approve the fiscal year 2025-26 final budget. This is an item for possible action. And we have with us today our Chief Financial Officer, Mark Mathers, and our Budget Director, Jeff Bozzo. So welcome. I know that it says final, but we know that this is not really the final. So I don't want to bury the lead for anyone, but I, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that although this says final, we are gonna be coming back with at least one additional budgetary conversation because statutorily we're able to do that and the session is still ongoing right now. So I just wanted to put that disclaimer out that although you do see final in the title, it is not quite final, just so that everybody knows that these are not final decisions today. And is now when I open the public hearing? Okay. And then also I will be opening now the public hearing on the fiscal year 2025-26 tentative budget. Now, gentlemen, take it away.
Thank you, madam president, trustees, Mark Mathers, Chief Financial Officer. As you noted, we need to do two things today. One is conduct a hearing on the tentative budget that's required by law. The tentative budget is what you saw in April and so the public presumably has had ample time then to review that budget and provide any comments. And then secondly, we are required by June 8th to submit a final budget. And as the president noted, in legislative years, the final budget is more like a tentative budget 2.0, in that we are waiting for various actions to be taken by the state that'll affect our budget. So for legislative session years, state law allows us to file an amended final budget, which is the real final budget, within thirty days at the end of the regular session, which regular session ends on June 2nd. So we have basically all of June to make further refinements and reductions to our deficit that we can identify. And so for today, we continue to kind of chop wood and cut that deficit down. We've got some recommendations for you. I'll first go over kind of where we do stand with the state budget and legislation. And then I'm gonna turn it over to our Budget Director, Jeff Bozzo, to go through the bulk of the rest of the agenda here, identifying four concepts to reduce the deficit, talking about some analysis we've been doing, get your confirmation to continue to do that analysis, coming back to respond to the last several requests by this board for analysis. And then we got some summary slides and then we'll talk about, again, the month of June and what we can look forward to there. So with that, I'll try to quickly kind of what's happened since we last met two weeks ago and, and actually a lot has happened. Just to retrace, last meeting, we told you about, you know, the reductions in projected revenues for the state general fund that was done by the Economic Forum and also the state education fund. And then also the money committees of the legislature, basically covering that reduced revenue to the state education fund. So that basically took us back to- So, that basically took us back to the Governor's proposed budget in January and unfortunately for us, that meant going back to a $9.7 million deficit. I'd like to seen a zero million dollar deficit, but we are back to the original $9.7 million deficit. So, we built this presentation on all those actions being, you know, incorporated into the K-12 funding bill and I'll talk about that funding bill in a second, but that's just kind of again, recapping the last meeting and, and you know, we with two exceptions kind of are at that place today. So, we are looking at basically two bills that have a major financial impact on school districts. The first one, as I noted, was the, what we call the K-12 funding bill, which this year's Senate Bill 500, that actually has passed both houses and was presented to the Governor last week. He has until later this week to either veto or pass that bill. And I'll talk about kind of the nuances there in a second. But, within that K-12 funding bill, we did see an increase to Washoe's per pupil amount for our general fund per pupil revenues of $3 per pupil, which is an increase of $172,000. So, that was good, no real explanation for how that happened, but we saw that had been incorporated into the bill. And then skipping ahead, the second part of the K-12 funding bill that changed from when we last reported to you concerned state special education funding. So, you recall, there's really kind of two components to special education funding in the state budget. There's the local share of special education funding that comes from the People's Centered Funding Plan budget and then there's the state special education share, which is a minority of those expenses that comes from the State General Fund. We had been given information about our share of that funding and basically what the Governor proposed in his budget was to increase funding for each district in that account by 2%. And the 2% tracks broadly merit increases or step increases that teachers make on average statewide. So, it increased every district's allocation by 2% and that's what we largely budgeted as part of the tentative budget you saw. In a surprise, the money committees reversed that recommendation and did a quote targeted allocation unquote to four entities, Clark, Lyon University Schools and Charter Schools that presumably got a lower share of state special education funding than other districts. Unless asked, I don't, I don't intend to go through all of the nuances of that, but basically it took every other school district's 2% allocation, zeroed it out, and reallocated it to those four entities. And that, so our, our share of state special education funding was going to go up $705,000 and now it will go up $0. So, that reflects a reduction to anticipated revenues that now we will have to make up. And so, that increases our deficit by $705,000. Speaking with Pinion Public Affairs, we are continuing to work on addressing that. So, it's not over till it's over kind of a thing, but certainly a concern for us. I would have liked to have seen the legislature appropriate additional monies if those four entities' share was a concern rather than take it from the rest of the school districts in the state. So, unfortunately, that is codified in Senate Bill 500 and again, has passed both houses. But again, we've got our lobbying firm working hard to address that in, in other ways. So, I'll stop right there, I see there's some questions and try to answer them for you. Or maybe there's just comments.
It's probably a comment, although you, you've sort of answered the question. "I appreciate any district or anyone who operates a school and needs additional money for special education. I do not understand the logic of taking 3/4 of a million dollars from our children in order to give that to other very deserving entities, but taking 3/4 of a million dollars from the children here in Washoe County is not the way that you solve this. I understand that we've seen a downturn in revenues, but I'm incredibly disappointed that that special education money was taken from us because," and again Superintendent Ernst or CFO Mathers, "this does not mean that we do not provide these services. Everyone needs to understand that all that happened was taking away the money for services that we are legally and morally required to provide our students. So, this does not actually result in a reduction in what it is that we offer our kids, it just further reduces our ability to pay for it." And it's just incredibly disappointing. We've been working so hard, meeting after meeting, to get this deficit down and to know that we've now been handed nearly 3/4 of a million dollars more of deficit to account for. It just, it hurts my heart and particularly because we're talking about children with special education needs. So, that's more of a comment. I'll turn now to Superintendent Ernst.
Thank you, President Smith, that's accurate. We need to continue to provide educational services for our special education children. I appreciate the seeking of the clarification on that and will continue to provide those services to our students based on whatever resources and funds are available.
Very good. So, again, SB 500 is sitting on the Governor's desk awaiting his action.
See if I'll Mathers, one moment.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
No, I, again, I'm just echoing, I'm very disappointed in the state. It is like, oh, what are you talking about? You know, we're one of the other larger districts here as well, alright? And I know that it's not over till it's over, but whatever you keep doing, just keep trying to keep squeezing it as much as you can, you know, because it's not over till it's over. And I'm, I'm an optimist, but to hear that, very disappointed in that. I just had to echo that.
Yep. The...
I'm sorry, I gotta chime in. I know I receive quite a few emails of concern, of anxiety, complaints on how we provide for our special ed students, which they're, they're special. They, they deserve the support, but I think this is the, the time that it has to be said. It's not for us lack of trying or doing everything we can. The blame needs to be laid at the feet that deserve this and the state basically just thumbed their nose at, at these children right now and I'm, I'm pissed.
Okay, the second legislation that kind of has the financial impact certainly to Washoe, but is in play here in the last week of the session and we are down to the last week, is Assembly Bill 398. And what that actually does is provide compensation incentives for hard to fill teacher positions. So, this is a good thing, largely focused on title schools. This is the Speaker of the Assembly's bill. It was then modified to also include funding for charter school teachers incentives like SB 231 did last session for public school districts. This would provide funding to match any compensation increases charter schools give to their teachers and that was, you know, telegraphed by the Governor as a key, key bright line issue for him. So, the bill was amended to include that. It has passed one house, it's on to the second. It's the second to the bottom bullet point here on legislation at, just parenthetically, at one time it would have disallowed use of weighted funding for employee incentives and we do do that currently. And so, again, thanks to our efforts of Pinion Public Affairs, that was amended to allow Washoe certainly to continue to do that. But, the Governor's spoken very strongly about wanting charter schools to have the same level of compensation incentives that public schools did. So, AB 391, 398 is moving through the legislature. We'll see if the Governor signs SB 500 or holds off on approval of SB 500 until AB 398 passes and is on his desk as well. So, we will continue to monitor developments. The last week is a flurry, as you all know, but these two bills are certainly in play and they need to be solved before other parts of the state budget can be solved. So, all eyes will be on, on kind of what's happening there in Carson and we'll let you know as soon as we know.
I just have a quick question about the ones that you have listed with monetary amounts. Are the, the asterisks next to them that those are unfunded? So, do those bills include funding or what, which ones include funding and which ones not? That, that's not a indicator, the asterisks?
No, none of, none of those bills include funding.
Okay, they're all unfunded mandates.
They are all unfunded mandates. Now, some of these bills, I want to be fair, have been amended since we first listed them and may not carry the price tag that they used to. So, for example, SB 410, fourth from the bottom, has passed both houses. It now requires that dependent health insurance coverage be a mandatory subject of bargaining. That doesn't mean anymore there's a $900,000 direct price tag.
Okay.
So, we just didn't have time to continue to refine the slides here, but...
No, that's okay.
Virtually all of these are still in play.
Okay.
At one extent or another and so again, we'll see how, how things go in the last week.
Yeah, I mean, 277 and 396 are giant price tags, so, and they're, they're currently unfunded.
Yeah, SB 396, just to catch you up to speed, I hadn't planned on going through this, perfectly fine because they did have huge price tags, has been heavily amended.
Okay.
We provided a fiscal note showing the cost of that, thanks to Mr. Bozzo, and that has swayed the conversation quite a bit so that it now, I do not believe has a fiscal impact for us. It's simply reporting now versus requiring additional positions. SB 277 has some, you know, when we looked at it, had some unclear language. We're hopeful that that won't actually require that and is more of a expression of intent, if you will, but I always worry when I have a bill, that has a bill that says that because you never know how that's gonna be interpreted in the courts.
Absolutely.
So, again, a lot of these bills have been amended once or twice and I think we'll be prepared to give you kind of a final rundown of the status of each of these bills later in June after the session ends.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And so, yes.
Sorry, I gotta say something more. I, I love that word intent and I hope I can articulate this. The state wants to show the intent that they care so much that they want to do these things, yet they don't want to pay for them. And then that makes us look bad when we have to do whatever variances or whatever, basically saying, "Sorry, we can't do this." Just with the social workers, don't we have to hire out of the school district to support our schools because we can't get enough social workers applying to our schools? I mean, do they have any idea of what's going on? Let's just add more people that we can't fill. Thank you.
So, I won't comment on that, but this is exactly why, I'll be very honest, our next budget meeting could be very interesting. So, we are only working in a space of assumption and educated guesses and just like we learned last week, with 3/4 of a million dollars, any morning we wake up, we could be looking at a different outcome and that's why this is really gonna be a photo finish with potentially incredibly large decisions to make when the dust settles, assuming it is fully settled by June 2nd.
I'll just conclude by concurring these are all unfunded mandates and if you really want these things, then fund them. And, and so, you know, I, I have to agree with the sentiments expressed here. With that though, we will turn it back to the district and as noted, Jeff will lead the conversation going forward here.
Thanks, Mark. So, getting into our recommendations to help offset the budget deficit, we'll start with workers' compensation rates. So, the purpose of workers' compensation rates are to charge districts, district funds to send it over to the Workers' Compensation Fund to pay for workers' compensation, insurance and claims. It's a, a charge to the district based on a percentage of an employee's salary. So, that charge costs to the general fund and other funds sent over to the Workers' Fund to pay for those, those costs. So, the Workers' Compensation Fund has had several healthy years. Most of that is due to the recent cost of living adjustments that were given out last year and this year totaling over 15%. So, the amount of revenue going into that fund has increased. We're also working to change our insurance policy to reduce the risk of large claims. Both of those things should reduce the ongoing long-term cost of that fund. Mark and I put together a projection through fiscal year 31 where we can slowly draw on the net position or fund balance of that fund and what we can do there is relieve the general fund, an estimated $312,000.
Thank you. That sounds like a very reasonable, I guess, way to approach it. In the event that the projection is not correct, then we would take money from the general fund to meet the needs, how would that look?
So, what, let's say we get three years down the road and we've had some really bad years in the fund, we could look at raising the rate to recoup costs on an ongoing basis or if there was a, a one-time significant cost in the fund, then we could possibly look at a one-time injection into the fund from the general fund for that cost to help get it back in, on track.
Thank you. And, and so that might be how we could use any kind of rollover dollars that we have or reserves.
Yeah, let, let me just clarify too. We are actually overfunded in that fund. We have a reserve for future incurred but not reported liabilities. So, there's an actuarial report that says you must reserve X dollars, I'll say. We do that and then we have fund balance over and above that amount. So, we are overfunded and the idea here is twofold. One is to start to draw down on that overfunding because many times an external auditor will point that out and say, "What's your plan? You're overfunded, so what are you gonna do?" Secondly, there's a, there's a risk shift, if you will, a shift in risk to our insurance company. So, we're self-funded, but we can offload risk to that insurance company and so, based on very recent analysis, we think we can do that in a very cost-effective manner. And so, combined, we, we're, you know, we don't usually like to, you know, recommend things such as this, but I'm, I'm really comfortable recommending it to this board. It's a slow drawdown and we can certainly tack left or right depending on, you know, actual experience going forward.
Okay, thanks. The next item here is a review of our facility use fees. So, we make our buildings and rooms and grounds available to the public per board policy. We have a tiered fee schedule for the use of facilities and we also have a custodial overtime rate when we, custodian needs to be provided to make sure the building is cleaned beforehand, during, and after the event. So, similar to the Workers' Compensation Fund, there's been adjustments over time. The custodial wage has increased with the recent cost of living adjustments and SB 231 increases. So, the cost of custodial overtime has increased almost 20% over the last few years and we haven't updated the fees. So, the options here would be to raise the rates by 20% to catch up the custodial overtime fee to the new costs. This would result in $40,000 in additional revenue in the general fund. It's a very straightforward way of doing this. Another option would be to review this further in FY '26. Another option would be to review this further in FY '26 with a more detailed analysis.
Thank you, and is it, is my assumption correct that not only custodial fees, but anytime you have something special going on in the school, you have electricity, which we know is going up, et cetera? Okay, thank you.
So just to kind of clarify with this, to make sure everyone's following along, if I understand this correctly, we have been offering our facilities at a rate which reflected the accurate cost a time ago, but ultimately, we've been running out of deficit with this, and so all we are doing is recalibrating the cost, but it is still an at-cost with no profit to the community, correct?
That is correct.
So it's just a recalibration of the at-cost prices. I think that that's more than fair. I think whenever we can do anything for our community at cost, I think that that's a smart move, and I appreciate the future analysis and the fact that you'll be coming back potentially in June with the review of the athletic transportation fees. Because you're right, we have to look at all the places where perhaps we're running at a deficit and just make sure that we're recalibrating the actual at costs. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is our general fund contingency account. So we have a board policy that requires the general fund contingency account be at 1% last biennium, or I guess the biennium we're currently in, with those significant revenue increases in the people-centered funding plan, the contingency account increased significantly. This proposal here is to reduce the contingency account from $6.4 million to $5 million. So that would get it to about three-quarters of a percent, down from 1%. Now, there are some cons to this. One is if we have an enrollment decrease, that's more than what we expected when we get to count day, we'll have less in the contingency fund to help offset the position cuts that would result. You know, there's other issues here, like covering federal funding, if we need to do that, legal costs. We shaved down the electricity costs in the last budget presentation, but a few years ago, we saw a rapid increase, and we went through the contingency account rather quickly during the year. So anyway, there are cons to this, but it's one way that we can help resolve the budget And then lastly, in this section, looking at the buildings that we lease, this table here shows what we're currently leasing, and staff is negotiating the lease of Plum Lane and may evaluate the relocation of staff to other buildings during the fiscal year, so there could be a savings there. And as we progress through the FMP and the admin building, there could be additional savings in lease costs. So nothing that we can save right now, but those are some down-the-road items. So just an update of what our FY '26 budget deficit is. We started today with a $4.1 million deficit. Then with the increase per people now and these other budget adjustments, we got it down to $2 million, but then with the special education funding reduction, we are sitting at a $2.7 million budget deficit.
I'll just add, as you can tell, we're looking under every nook and cranny to identify savings, and we'll continue to do that through June, so, but we're getting smaller and smaller payback for our efforts, right? But again, we're trying to get it down for you, come up with solutions, we'll continue to do that. Certainly, this $705,000 surprise, I'll just call it that way, really doesn't help. But that's where we stand as of today, and so that's what the final budget would present and be filed with the state unless you have changes to these recommendations.
So the next area is a review of academic programs.
Yeah, just to step in, you know, the point here is that we continue to look at central services, district-wide budgets, like the contingency account. We're reducing that as far as we feel like we comfortably can at this point. There will come a time at which unfortunately, we'll need to look at academic areas, maybe not for reductions, maybe for just different ways of doing things at a cheaper cost, which is what I think you want government to do. But the point here to this slide is that a very, very small portion of our budget is actually focused on central services. You can see there's 6%. And so you can only focus so much time on the smallest slice of the pie before you have to look at the rest of the pie. That's really the only point here, so we, you know, unfortunately, going to have to investigate this road, and that's the point of this section, is to talk about areas we're reviewing and get your concurrence to continue to review those areas and bring back ideas to you.
And also for clarification, and this will be more relevant to our next meeting, but with our board policy, in situations where we do utilize our end fund balance to cover deficiencies, as long as we have committed to future analyses, that that is in alignment with the governing model of our board. That's correct, right?
That is correct. This board can choose to file a budget with a deficit. The board policy just commits the board to developing a plan to get back into the black in the short term, and so, yes, that absolutely is an option.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I know we're going to go through several analyses, but I appreciate that because I'm always concerned about cutting something without the proper time to do a thorough analysis, the way that you have with every other area, and it would just feel very rushed to make decisions potentially blind. That always worries me because unintended consequences.
So the first area under the academic review is gifted and talented programs. So the total cost for gifted and talented is $6.4 million, but the weighted funding we get through the people-centered funding plan is $1.5 million. So that difference of $4.9 million is funded by the general fund. And we have a, under current state regulations, we have a very inefficient model to provide GT services to students at their own schools. So the idea here isn't to reduce services to GT students, but would be to, how can we serve students in a better way at a more efficient cost? So that could be looking at changing, you know, how we're providing services. There was a tuition reimbursement program that you all approved at an earlier budget meeting. Part of that was to provide endorsements to teachers. So if we have more GT-endorsed teachers through that, then that's one way that we can have a more efficient model to serve GT students.
And before we move on, we did receive some public comment on this item, and so I would like to give Superintendent Ernst an opportunity to further explore this.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you, Mr. Bazlo and Mr. Mathers. Appreciate the presentation. And President Smith, appreciate the comment about making sure that we are doing thoughtful analysis in all areas. As Mr. Mathers has explained, we've been turning over every rock within the organization, getting down to facilities' use fees and some slight savings that we could gain from that as a way of building back up to current costs, yet continuing to provide a service for the community. As also has been discussed tonight, we need to have a plan to get back into the black. If this were to move forward and you were all to approve this at an upcoming meeting, it's imperative that we do have a plan. And so, just as Mr. Bazos has said, we're looking for efficiencies, and when we can get to efficiencies, that can have some cost benefit, but these are just additional ideas that we continue to explore as a district, among many. So just wanted to provide that clarification and appreciate the comments that have been offered.
Thank you. I have a question, if there's any way that we could also have some information about especially the students going to the magnet schools. They are very much placed in the outer perimeter of our district, meaning that they are not accessible to many of our students. So I am very curious and always have been, how many of our students are not zoned or live close to those areas and are able to access our GT programs? And I think that's part of, that information is something that we need to know before we look at the big picture of gifted and talented. As many of you know, I taught at Sparks Middle School, and going out to Mendive at the time, or now it would be Sky Ranch, would not have been possible for most of my students, and so they only received those push-in services maybe once or twice a month, which was not effective, right? And so I really appreciate that we're going to look at this, because we need all students to have access, not those that are blessed enough to have parents who can drive them somewhere, because we are not going to be able to add transportation at this point, right? And so I think, I think we need to also have some ideas of where the students are coming from that are going to those magnet programs, so if that's a possibility, that we can have a little more information about who is going to those programs and how we can better serve all of our students. So, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So I think, like many of us, I'm a big supporter of GT education. I found this to be very eye-opening, because the state only gives us $1.5 million, and yet the costs that we incur are much higher. So I appreciate, and I plan to support this authorization to do an analysis, to understand the strings attached with their money, and whether or not we could build something better for our kids without the requirements that come with not enough money to run the program anyways, but a big price tag in order to meet those expectations. So I am personally looking forward to how we can serve this educational community potentially better, but with more autonomy.
A question about that. I think I get where you're going, and I like the direction. Are you saying that we would untie the strings of receiving state funding so that we can create our own programming? I'm trying to understand exactly what you mean.
That certainly is one option. If we're only going to get $1.5 million from the state, and that they're funding GT-weighted programs at the alleged weight of .05, which seems preposterous to me, to run a GT program at that low of a weight. So we're not going to get any more than that. So you're exactly right. One of the options, among many, that we could look at is foregoing that one and a half million and designing our own program. So not having the strings associated with constructing inefficient system, foregoing that $1.5 million and seeing you come up with a better system that we like better and letting the million and a half go. That is one of the options that we would want to look at.
And just to clarify, it doesn't, today's vote doesn't mean that that would or wouldn't happen. We're directing the superintendent to authorize the time to do a thorough analysis that would come forward to this board and the community at a later date.
That's right.
Thank you. Moving on to fixed allocations, so in addition to our enrollment-based positions that, you know, get adjusted when we have projected enrollment or calendar adjustments, we also have fixed allocations at certain smaller schools. So with falling enrollment over the past several years, this analysis would be to look at efficiencies at those schools and lowering the average per people cost at those schools. As you can see in this table here, the average per people cost at our fixed allocation schools are about 55% higher than our enrollment-based schools. Lastly here, is a review of our last year's strategic plan budget proposals. So there was a $10 million general fund investment into the strategic plan, and that included allocation adjustments at one and two-star schools with the idea that we would come back and have an academic return on investment, if you will. So the analysis would include that and possible other areas of using an income-needs-based approach to concurrent enrollment fees, or also other programs that have been completed. You know, we checked the box, they've been implemented, and no longer require funding to continue. This next section here is a follow-up on two of the analysis that you asked for back in February, with the first being the compensation and benefits for aides and assistants, and then I'll follow that up with student-teacher compensation. So we don't have a lot of general education aides or assistants, but we do have library assistants. As of May 15th, all of those positions are filled. And then we have, at the elementary schools, teacher aide duty reduction positions. So these are one-hour-per-day positions to help cover lunch duty. Those are usually provided as additional hours to positions that are already at the school. There's a 10% vacancy rate in those positions, and then what we did here to the side will show, you know, what a potential 5% or 10% pay increase for those positions would be. In English learner programs, all of our EL assistants are 35-hour-a-week, fully benefited positions. Right now, there's 6.125 FTE that are currently vacant, about 11% of those positions. However, we think that's because of the significant amount of EL assistant positions that we added last year and are still working to fill. But again, you can see the cost of a 5% or 10% pay increase here. Going into our special education program assistance, so for every special, excuse me, special education self-contained classroom, on the left side of this table here, you can see the different programs that that would be. They all have a dedicated assistant in each classroom that ranges between 30 and 35 hours per week, and these are, again, fully benefited positions. And also in fiscal year '22, when we did the critical shortage compensation adjustments, these positions were increased one grade level. Overall, between, or throughout all these programs, we have a 3.7% vacancy rate, and you can see the, again, the cost of a 5% or 10% pay increase for these positions. And then the last part for the aide and assistant compensation and benefit analysis is for special education one-to-one aides. The hours for each of these positions is based on the amount of hours based on students' needs that are written into their IEPs. So some positions qualify for benefits based on those hours, others don't, and currently, about 24% of those positions are vacant. You can see that, again, the cost of a 5% or 10% pay increase here. Also, 40% of these positions currently don't qualify for benefits, so if we were to provide benefits for these positions, the cost would be about $1.1 million. Moving on to student-teacher compensation, so this year, we had 74 student teachers, and eight of them are being paid because they're covering a classroom, and so therefore, they're being paid as a long-term sub, and they must get their sub-license in order to qualify for that pay. The other 66 student teachers are not paid this year, so in working with human resources, we came up with options to, options for you on different ways that we could compensate student teachers, whether it's a portion of the long-term sub-rate or fixed rates per semester. Most of these come with a pretty hefty price tag. All right, I'm going to hand it back to Mark now to kick off the general fund budget section.
So as you've all lived and experienced it, we've gone through a series of deliberations and discussions. This slide really kind of is a core piece to this presentation that takes you back to February 25th, when we did calculate that initial $9.67 million deficit, and now you can add $705,000 to that, right? But these are the steps that have been taken and approved by the board to date. For today, we show you what's proposed. Again, it gets us...
Again, it gets us from 9.7 and really 10.4, if you want to count it that way, right? That includes the $705,000 state special education funding shift, down to 2.7 million dollars. So significant work's been done. We have tried our best to avoid any reductions in, at schools, at school sites, in the academic areas. And that's always been our goal. So kind of here, here's where we end in the current process, as the president said, and as we talked about last time. You know, we faced a surprisingly high deficit here based on state revenues. Unfortunately, again, we go back to last year, the economy was doing reasonably well. And then we've seen a bit of a turn, beginning in January, based on a number of factors, including tariffs and other things. And so, right, the economic forum revised its forecast downward, and that's really hit us like a two-by-four right between the eyes, right? And so we don't want to make any rushed decisions. We want to do things thoughtfully. We don't think we can come up with multimillion-dollar suggestions, proposals that touch school sites in a thoughtful, orderly way with two months before the start of school year. We just can't see that being a reasonable recommendation from staff at this time. But we have made significant reductions. Again, we'll continue to look at things in June, hope for some relief here in the last week of the session. But this is, we've come a fair, a fair amount of the way, right? From 10.4 to 2.7. And it would be 2 million if not for, again, that shift in state special education funding. So we are proposing a final budget. Again, final not meaning really final in legislative years. With that deficit, ongoing deficit of 2.7 million dollars, we'll need to address it. We're not saying we won't, but at this time, this is what we're proposing, to file with the State Department of Taxation. And again, we'll have one, possibly two more meetings to talk about other concepts and solutions, including, you know, the analysis of your requests that you've made in the past. We'll package that together to hopefully make sense to you in terms of different, the different areas of the budget that we're looking at or you've asked us to look at. This will mean our ending fund balance will come down. We are seeing for the fiscal year '26 budget, a fund balance just under 10%. That's still a reasonable zone to be in. It's less than our target fund balance policy, but again, not a uncomfortable place to be in. So that would be the result of this final budget recommendation. And that's just reflected here, again, either in the yellow or green, no areas in red in terms of policy targets or statutory requirements. And with that, I will turn over Jeff to talk about the other funds in our budget, and they're significant as well. Jeff's going to go through that fairly quickly. Any other comments Jeff wants to make as well about the general fund budget? Please feel free.
Nothing, nothing else on the general fund right now, so we'll jump into other funds. These are all funds with restricted purposes. Unfortunately, they're all in, in, in pretty good shape. Our special revenue funds account for our categories of weighted funding, special ed, and other grant funds. Again, those are, those are looking good here. Our internal service funds, similar to how we talked about workers' comp earlier, there's charges to other funds that go into these funds as revenues to help pay for insurance and other costs related to those categories. Our capital projects funds are for capital projects, and they are in alignment with our district's capital improvement plan and include anticipated bond issuances in the upcoming fiscal year. Our debt service funds collect tax revenues, and we use those to pay the principal and interest payments on our, our bond issuances for capital projects. And then lastly here, our enterprise fund, this is our, our fund that accounts for our food services program. In total, our FY '26 final budget includes 1.4 billion dollars in expenditures. And then switching up from dollars to look at positions, we have a total of 7,467 full-time equivalent positions built into this budget. That's different from the number of employees that we have. If we count substitutes and coaches, we have a total of 9,759 employees as of last week. And with that, I will hand it back to Mark to discuss next steps.
So as we've talked about, we've made significant reductions to that initial deficit. We have now completed all of the analysis of all of the board's requests that we heard in February and March. And so they sit there and they'll be ready to discuss in, in greater depth in June. We've kept our recommendations in alignment with the district's budget priorities, and so that was important as well. As we've noted to you, that we are in the last week of a legislative session, at least the regular session. More to come. We'll, again, update you as soon as we hear anything, but we'll certainly come back June 10th at our next budget, board meeting to report kind of what transpired at the legislative level. Hopefully, we'll know the status of those bills, whether the governor signed them or not by June 10th, although he has, I think, a little longer than, than past June 10th to, to make decisions. But we'll do our best report on where we're at. Provide, again, continued analysis, identify any additional concepts we've been working on, and then talk again about fund balance, although I think we did a good job covering kind of the reasons why we might want to consider use of fund balance for this budget. And so certainly, we're available to answer any additional questions, comments of the board. But again, we, we need you to close the hearing on the tentative budget after hearing public, any public comment, and then approve the final budget, including these staff recommendations or any changes to those recommendations.
All right, thank you. And that's a good time to go to public comment. JJ, who do we have?
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
Good morning, guys. So my name is Pablo Navaduran, and welcome back to the budget forum to you guys' updates. So I know that economics over there, we're nearly reaching, guys, so, so we got to prepare for deficits. So we know, we know the tourism going down, that mean less revenue, that mean more deficits. So I want to talk about TT back, mag at, at particular school, but when I substitute at Swoop, yeah, because I did substitute, because I did teach, so TT students and non-TT students. You know, the TT's, TT program are asset for Swoop Middle School. And we do know, I do know that Swoop have a behavior issue over years, to be clear about that. But, you know, if you cut down TT program, and then Swoop could be affected greatly. If you look, if you look at Chetown County, Florida, they cut that all the TT program. There are no TT program here. The kids will, the deficit for community, if it will remove TT program out of Swoop. And also plus, plus, thank you for trustee for looking at option for reducing high school participation, because this is a very important for, for attendance. So, so thank you. And then also, one last thing is the EL program, it's not for a fat of the kids, especially the Spark Middle School, because I did substitute Spark Middle School, did Grace Kid, a yellow program, new incumbent program. If this program will be cut, that's going to be a lot deficits. You know, it does that TT program, TT or EL program, but that would deficit the entire school district, include the administrator up to the teacher and the factories. That's very painful to say, you know? I want to help you guys, me, Kalen, I want to help Kalen Evans to help the, you know, speak up to governor, to sign the governor for the state, you know, but have not helped yet. You know, I'm available, please, if you need help, please let me know. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navaduran. We always need help, so we appreciate you offering it.
Jennifer Hey.
That is Ms. Hoy. Welcome. Hopefully, you got to hear the earlier parts of the conversation.
I did.
You did, okay. I didn't even see you back there, so nice to have.
I snuck in, I had to work today.
That is true. It was very nice to see you.
All right. Good afternoon, President Smith, members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Ernst, members of the Washoe County community, thank you for giving me time to speak this afternoon. My name is Jenny Hoy. I'm a nationally board-certified teacher for the gifted and talented students. I am, I proudly teach at Swoop Middle School. I am the GT Magnet teacher. I have taught in the Magnet program since its inaugural year in 2011, and I've been a state-certified in gifted education since 2009. I can confidently say that we offer world-class education services to our GT students. Our students leave us better prepared for high school and beyond, and families leave us, and families have actually moved to Washoe County specifically to access our programming. Our gate educators present at regional, national, and international conferences. What we do is rigorous and deeply meaningful. Gifted students are uniquely vulnerable to mental health challenges, suicide, perfectionism, self-harm, substance abuse, and underachievement, and more. Research shows LGBTQ gifted students face even further and greater risks. Gate teachers receive ongoing targeted training to support both academic and social and emotional development. We don't just, just teach, we guide and help our students thrive. We celebrate when former, our former students earn national merit honors, compete nationally in events like We the People, Speech and Debate, and Mock Trial. Many return to share their successes, often saving, saying Magnet saved me, or I never felt good enough until Magnet. Their journeys began in our classroom. Lately, my mailbox has been full of graduation announcements, college acceptance plans, and heartfelt thank you notes, reminders of the lasting impact of SWAS and Magnet. As someone who also, believe it or not, holds a business degree with an emphasis in financial management and economics, I fully understand the financial management and economics challenges facing our, our district currently faces in today's political climate. Hard choices must be made. So yes, examine what the gate department does, analyze our results, look at how we spend every single dollar. But please, please include us in this conversation. Do not push us out. I sincerely invite each of you to come see us in action. Join us for a Socratic discussion, a field trip to UNR, a night at the races, or National History Day. Speak to our students, observe the impact of small class sizes, rigorous and accelerated curriculum, and strong collaboration. The guardrails, not strings, guardrails of this program. Access, 22 to 1 classroom ratios, and strong developmental leadership are not luxuries. They are the varying reason for our outcomes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hoy.
We welcome your collaboration. Thank you for your consideration.
Well, I think the superintendent has something to say as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Hoy. We appreciate all you're doing for our GT students and the service that you've provided through the many years. Certainly, as we look at all analysis, we intend to do so with our teachers, with our community, and so we appreciate you sharing and your advocacy here to, today, and know that, you know, we're committed to making sure that we're working with our employees, our families, our communities, to work through some of these difficult cuts that we, we look at in front of us, but very much appreciate your comments and, and desire to be included in the conversation.
All right, thank you. Room W113, anytime.
Thank you, Ms. Hoy.
Kalen Evans.
Welcome, President Evans.
Hi, for the record, my name's Kalen Evans, the president of the Washoe Education Association. And as you know, we represent all the certified professionals in the Washoe County School District. I did want to echo the previous speaker, that was going to be one of my points, just making sure that as we are doing these things and making these changes, that we are doing them with people and not to people. And I think that we've seen a number of issues throughout the year where we feel like we're maybe making moves before we're really talking to the people that are being impacted. And the reality is that the people in these departments have a lot of really good tangible solutions for how we can be more efficient, and so it's just important that we're engaging them. And I do want to just say appreciation to staff and their discussion around the use of end fund balance, at least temporarily as a bridge. Mr. Mallers would know better than me, I think it was either 2019 or 2021. Prior to that, the end fund balance was actually not allowed to be as high as it is. So while I would say, I think he said it well, it's not an uncomfortable position, given the, the percentage, I think it's a very reasonable, because we don't, I know, President Smith, you had mentioned, I think, a couple others about not making changes quickly, and then all of a sudden, you know, within a couple months, and we're like, wow, you know what, we didn't quite have an idea of what the impact. So I do genuinely appreciate staff and your guys' decision on, you know, maybe taking this slow, getting us to a point where we can make sure that we have a really clear analysis before we make changes. And I just always want to take a, an opportunity to talk about how important retention is around this discussion. Our district spends millions of dollars every biennium, I would imagine, in hiring, right? Every person that we have to hire costs tens of thousands of dollars to find and recruit and, and process and service and then get them. And as you guys have known, I've said it many times, our average retention rate in Washoe County is less than five years, right? A third of our staff don't make it past their third year. And so when we think about how are we spending our money, we have to look long-term in terms of how are we investing our money to keep our staff? Because by investing dollars now, we save money on the backend by not having to constantly be recruiting and rehiring, things around robust mentorship programs. We need to keep folks in the position and help them be successful. So I just want to really, and, and a big piece of that is the climate and the culture of our district. When we have a district where folks want to work in, money is always important when you talk about cost of living, but at the end of the day, they want to have to feel valued and appreciated for the work they do. And so we, it's incumbent upon everybody to make sure that folks want to work in our district and feel valued, and then that's how we're going to be able to really address retention. And then I will just quickly say too, I know that they have vendor contracts, right? We have a lot of vendors, we have a lot of things that we give money. I know there's certain money can only be used for certain things, but really examining those, renegotiating those vendor contracts. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
You have three seconds left still. Superintendent Ernst.
Thank you, President Smith, thank you, President Evans, for your comments. We appreciate those, and we will continue to do very thoughtful analysis each step of the way, as we've done this year, and we will continue to openly collaborate with WEA, and continue to strengthen the climate and culture in Washoe County School District, because we understand how important that is, and we appreciate your collaboration as we're going forward.
Thank you so much.
The board received emails from James Levitt, Tahan Slocum, Andy Walden, Corinne Phillips, Avery Van Kirk, Erin Altshuler, Alex Van Kirk, and Holly De Silva.
Wonderful. All right, I will bring it back here. Now that we're done with public comment, I will close the public hearing on fiscal year 2025, '26 for the tentative budget. And that brings us now to possible action. We've had a great conversation all along the way. We have a motion right here, just as a reminder to the board and the community. We covered a few areas which would result in further reduction. The other areas are only for staff to move forward with an analysis that would be done over a portion of time in partnership with the employees that we just mentioned, that would all come forward for a public discussion at some point in the future, just so everyone is very clear on what the actions would be versus what the analyses would be. And I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, President Smith. I move that the Board of Trustees approve staff recommendations in the following areas: workers' compensation rate reduction, facility use fees, reduction of the general fund contingency account, and relocation of leased spaces and authorization of continued analyses in the
in the academic area, and approve a final budget for fiscal year 2025-26.
And I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by trustee Westlake and a second by trustee Phoenix. Um, Vice President Mayberry?
Yeah, I, thank you. Um, we, we can discuss this. Yeah, so, these are just, I'm not going to get too deep into weeds here. These are just some rudimentary questions for, for, for my, my benefit. Uh, number one, the general fund contingency account. That's not the same as the ending fund balance. Go ahead.
That's right. It's a, an account allowed by law, required by board policy. Uh, it's a buffer for an, an account used to tap for unanticipated needs during the year. We used it most recently, for example, to preserve allocations at one and two-star schools, elementary schools. And so, that kind of came about as a, a mid-year kind of recommendation of the board, and so, we tapped into that contingency account during the year. So, it's there just for unexpected, unanticipated issues, whether they're electricity rate increases, like I said, preserving allocations, mid-year allocations, and so forth. In most years, we have tapped greatly into that account.
Do you foresee any opportunities in the next week for additional revenue and, and any legislation coming out of the, out of Carson City? I mean, is, is that?
From your lips to God's ears, Vice President Mayberry.
Well, I, I mean, I, I mean, I think the state continues to struggle with the, the economic performance projection of reduced revenues, right? They, um, but I, I, I never say never, right? I, you know, um, I know we have strong advocates, including WEA in Carson, and, um, we've seen 11th hour surprises. So, I don't want to say one way or the other, we're, we're just hopeful and, 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 you know, in a, in a perfect world, that would cover the remaining $2.7 million deficit, and we could go home. So, we'll see.
And, uh, the, the, you'll, we'll have the final budget discussion on, uh, or the amended budget, if you will, on 6/24. Is that right?
We can use both June 10th and June 24th to discuss, deliberate, and make decisions, because our amended final budget won't be due till July 2nd or so. So, we, we'll see how that goes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you. Great clarifications. All right, team, seeing no other lights on, we have a motion by trustee Westlake, a second by trustee Phoenix. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, team. Um, it brings us to right around four o'clock, and that closes item 3.01 and section three in its entirety. We're going to go ahead and take a roughly 15-minute recess. Thank you.
Alright everyone, we're gonna start bringing it back here. Alright team, it is four twenty-four PM on this Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, and I would like to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Right before this recess, we just finished with item three oh one and closed section one in its entirety, and we will be reopening section four. We had previously gone through agenda item four oh one, which means now we are going to open item four point zero two. This is the award of request for proposal RFP ninety dash P dash zero one dash twenty-five dash A S, Food Service Management Company, for a term of one year, beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, for a guaranteed return of eight hundred eighty thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars, which includes reimbursement of costs in the estimated amount of five hundred thirty-three thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and fifteen cents, plus other reimbursable expenses, such as salaries, benefits, and food costs, to Southwest Food Service Excellence LLC. This is an item for possible action. And we have with us today our Chief Operating Officer, Adam Cersei, and our Director of Procurement and Contracts, Andrea Sullivan. Do I get to say what's cooking?
Absolutely.
We got a lot on the menu this evening.
I love it!
Good evening.
I gotta laugh back there, somebody laugh, thank you, thank you for saving me!
I gotcha, okay, good evening, Adam Cersei, for the record, Chief Operating Officer. We've got a little bit of an outline here, but this is an RFP award, or an RFQ award proposed recommendation for a food service management company. So, a little bit about how we got here, some acronym definitions. National School Lunch Program, it's kind of, it's important to orient ourselves to really what we are navigating in this world. The National School Lunch Program is an extremely foundational element of public education in the United States. It's administered by the United States Department of Agriculture through the Nevada State Department of Agriculture, and it's really the foundation and the framework through which we experience our school meals. In order to administer that program, the school district employs nearly four hundred different individuals across all of our sites. These are WCSD employees, and they do tremendous work. It's always astonishing to comprehend the scale of the work that we do with these folks and for our students across the entire district. And for many decades, the Washoe County School District, as well as the majority of large school districts and even small districts across the country, have employed specialized partners. In this context, referred to as food service management companies, who specialize in navigating this complex federal program, and specialize in doing so with a financial guarantee. So again, specialized expertise, expert management. We've been in this type of an arrangement for quite some time. This is, again, when I mentioned just under four hundred employees for the school district side, we're talking five to ten employees on the food service management side helping administer this program. So, in order to join forces with the food service management program, the National School Lunch Program, the USDA requires that we issue an RFQ at least once every five years. And so, we've done that historically on that cadence. This is actually, it allows for a one-year contract with up to four renewals, is how it works out. And then, after that, you have to competitively solicit it at least once every five years. So, the scope of this RFQ is really the administration of the entire program and the assurance of the outcome. So that, that has a broad range to it. Not only do you have to conduct the program in compliance with the National School Lunch Program, you have to train all the staff, the actual execution, the acquisition of the commodities, the development of the menus, the whole shebang, the administration of the program to assure the most ideal outcomes. All the while, WCSD, WCSD staff still remain WCSD staff, as well as facilities. They are a partner in managing this overall program. This also notably comes with a financial guarantee, so there is a risk mitigation factor embedded within this contract. If revenues fall short of that guarantee, the district is protected. If they exceed that guaranteed outcome, the district actually receives the entirety of that amount. So, just to kind of conclude, the, the school district's role remains the same. In addition to those four hundred or so employees, is to oversee the food service management company, both financial and operational, which leads us to this RFP, once every five years, needing to go out and competitively hire these folks.
Okay, thank you, Andrea Sullivan, for the record, Director of Procurement and Contracts. As Adam mentioned, the USDA requires that we go out at least every five years. Each contract period is only one year, so we have to thoughtfully look at it year by year to determine if we want to renew or not. But we must it every five years. I have actually personally conducted this RFP in two thousand and ten, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and twenty, and two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five. So I think I have one more left to do in my time here. But, we, we, it is a very intricate, complicated RFP process. There are a whole lot of NDA and USDA requirements and regulations that we have to follow. It's very rigorous. We, I actually don't use our own RFP template that I use for everything else. NDA has a template that we use, it's a fifty-page, you know, RFP document. I had something like twenty-six to thirty attachments that we added on to theirs to provide all kinds of information to all the interested food service management companies. So we had anything and everything they needed to propose adequately and accurately on this. You know, everything from wellness policies to financial statements over the past several years, to the previous contracts with our previous food service management companies, to sales by sites. Like, they got any amount of information that they could get in order to really put together a really solid proposal. And so, we issued that proposal on January twenty-third, and on February twelfth, we conducted a mandatory pre-proposal meeting. And we toured Hug High, Traynor Middle School, and Duncan Elementary School, and we did so during the service time, so that the potential proposers could see what it looks, what a lunch looks like, what the lines look like, where, what, what we're doing well, what could be improved upon. And we had twenty-one people from five different food service management companies in attendance, plus probably another half dozen district staff, so it was really well attended. We had a lot, we generated a lot of interest during the RFP process, had a lot of good questions, we issued addendums. But it was a really productive tour. And then, we publicly opened proposals on March seventh, and then started passing out the proposal to the committee members. Some of the selection criteria included the, you know, the overall financial results. So it's both the cost, which you saw in the title, is five hundred and thirty-three thousand, that's the fees they charge, it's a per-meal fee they charge. So based on the estimated meals that they're, they're gonna serve, that's their fee. But they also then proposed a guaranteed return to the fund. So that's a guaranteed profit to the fund that we can then use to invest in the, reinvest in the program. So that was one of the criteria, then obviously their expertise and experience in this, their technical approach, their implementation plan, right? If you're a new company coming in, and you're not the old, if you're not the old food service management company, how are you gonna implement and get going right away for the start of school? And be able to serve all of our kids sort of seamlessly, where they don't notice the change? And really importantly, how are you gonna increase participation? We do have some low-participation schools, so we're really looking for ways to increase participation, get more kids fed, and get more kids fed through our, our schools. Particularly in the non, the, the non-title schools that already are, all those kids are receiving free lunches. Now we're looking at some of our schools that aren't completely free, but where low participation exists. And then, we look at the adequacy of the staff that they're providing, you know, that what's the, they're managing the program. So what's the adequacy of their staff? And then, we also look at, really in deep, in depth, at their twenty-one-day sample menu. So they have to provide a twenty-one sample day menu for each level and each meal, so breakfast and lunch, for each elementary, middle, and high. And then, when chosen, they actually have to stick to that twenty-one-day menu for the first twenty-one days. And then, if they wanna change the menu, if they learn something from serving it those twenty-one days, they have to work with the district and get our approval to, to change it. So we don't want them coming in with a great menu, and then twenty-one days later saying, "We're gonna change everything and make it, you know, lower quality." So we make sure that that doesn't happen contractually. So, we received four valid proposals from four different food service management companies, and we passed those out to all the evaluation committee members, they each evaluated individually. And then, we met as a group in our first committee meeting on March nineteenth, and discussed the pros and cons of all of them, and ultimately, the committee selected two of the four to come back and give presentations. During that presentation, we had food sampling, but it's not, it wasn't just cook whatever food you think that tastes good. They had to pick it from their twenty-one-day sample menu. And so, we tasted food that they will be serving in our cafeterias during their first twenty-one days. And so, it was a nice way to get to see sort of the quality of the food, the flavor of the food, and what kind of varieties they were offering. And, you know, we'd asked everyone to put an emphasis on sustainability. Food quality was a big emphasis, and also gathering student input was a really big emphasis. I think sometimes the students aren't asked enough what they really want and what they would, what they would eat. But, so, so we're asking for them to get a lot of student input, and ultimately, the goal to increase participation in the program. This selection committee was pretty large, and it was very diverse, which was good, because we'd like to get, you know, more than just a couple of stakeholders involved. We had a parent who had kind of a focus on sustainability on the committee. We had a registered dietitian who used to work for the NDA in the child nutrition programs, so she understands this space really, really well. We also had somebody from the Food Bank of Northern Nevada, since we partner with them for our summer feeding programs and many other programs throughout the district, along with various nutrition services staff and some administrators on it as well. So we did get some really good feedback from various stakeholders. The financial proposals, which is the cost and the guarantee, looking at both, ended up being thirty percent of the final selection. We need a sustainable program that we can use profits to reinvest into the program. So yes, all of those other things are important, but so is turning a profit in the program if we can, and reinvesting that money into the program. Overall, of our finalists, Southwest Food Excellence had the lower fee, but they also had the higher guarantee return to the fund. So, at the end of the day, they scored highly with the committee during both phases, the initial phase where the, the finalists were selected, and then the final presentation phase. And we have recommended them as the best value to the committee. And I should say, along the way, also, my letter of intent, all my score sheets had to be reviewed and, and approved by the NDA. to be reviewed and approved by the NDA. And then when I got a final contract negotiated, that also had to be submitted and approved by the NDA by rule. And all of that has been done before, become before you tonight. I'll pass it back to Adam.
So pending approval tonight, we'll begin on the, next slide, please, on the transition. So conversations have already begun, of course, as Andrea described, tremendous amount of detailed information has been communicated with SFE already. But really, what I want to express tonight and heading into, looking ahead to next school year, is the need for stability. We're very excited and rightfully so. There's always opportunity for improvement. But, you know, I think it also needs to be emphasized how much so many of our students truly rely on the safety and security that comes with that reliable, balanced meal at school every day. And so I kind of wanted to highlight that, that our number one priority, I don't want anyone to think that things are going to significantly change or really change at all. Ahead of next school year, we're going to have outstanding meals served at every school to every student make available on a daily basis. Lots of introductions and an entire specialized transition team. Also, as Andrea described a part of the proposal, hey, how proposer will you approach transitioning, getting up to speed over a short period of time, onboarding the rest of your team to the Washoe County School District and integrating yourself with the team. So we'll be working on that throughout the summer. Always when we get back to school time, there's a lot of communication around school lunch and things like that. And just building up to the opportunities that we see and that the SFC, SFE team sees across the district. Andrea mentioned one of their emphasis was really around engagement, hearing from the students and customizing the menus to the preferences, sometimes from one school to another. Not one size fits all across the district. We have quite a few different menus today at the school district, but it's clear that SFE, that's part of their strategy, is to have more voice and student and community input into the different menus. They also highlight scratch cooking, more made-from-scratch ingredients and menu items. Over time, integrating that into the processes, that's the type of change that takes a little bit longer. Training staff on new preparation techniques that ultimately result in higher-quality meals on the table and then drive participation is basically the strategy. These are the types of things that we look forward to in partnership with SFE, likely over a period of multiple years. Right out of the gate, stability, student engagement, and just an air of enthusiasm and excitement, but with these positive changes coming at an appropriate pace. So that's kind of the summary of the process and how we got to the recommendation, which is before you on the screen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Vice President Mayberry.
I've been starving all day. This really makes it worse. Thank you for this. Yeah, that's interesting. Your career in five-year increments with food service. That's great. Of course. And I sent you a question about, you know, you mentioned sustainability. So I was hoping we could just do a little deeper dive on that with what SFE has in store that maybe we don't see today with insurance, that we don't have, getting rid of styrofoams, you know, plasticware, that sort of thing. What can you highlight for us?
Yeah, I appreciate. I'll fill that one. I responded to the emailed question. But for the group, you know, I think for sure a continuation of some of the improvements that we've made even this school year, the elimination of the styrofoam, the reduction and elimination of the packet, prepackaged units, some of which just get thrown away anyway. It's likely that they'll explore and expand reusable cutlery. So dishwashing, where applicable, whether it's the trays or the actual forks and spoons. That's not something that we do in our district right now to reduce single-use items. And then I mentioned the scratch cooking. So that's something that they talk about extensively and look to expand upon. In all of our middle schools and high schools, they actually receive the ingredients directly and prepare them and assemble the menu items on site. They're looking to expand that on varying scales at our elementary schools. Their strategy is that that will improve, as I described, the meal quality, the freshness, and then increase the participation. But that too should reduce single-use containers and whether it's plastics or cardboards that ultimately just basically serve a single use and go in the trash. So those are a couple of the elements that I expect, but I'm sure there's more as we get to know SFE and they get to know what opportunities are with us in the district.
Yeah, it's just, it's a topic that's important for some of our families. And it sounds like you have some representation on the committee to help steer you in that direction. So I think that's very positive. And then you have a current food provider that's been there for a while. And I trust the transition will be positive with SFE and Arrow Mark.
It has been, obviously, with any change. There's some tough choices involved, but everyone's conducting themselves like total professionals in service to our students.
Great. Look forward to it. Thank you. I'm still hungry.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Sullivan. This is obviously, this was an extensive process. So this is an easy vote, especially when you see a scope of services and there's the word financial guarantee. That makes it a lot easier. So thank you for your hard work. We really appreciate it. And Mr. Circe, it's always good to see you up here. You do a great job at presenting. So thank you.
I'm just really excited for the scratch cooking because the amount of plastic covering pancakes that were in my classroom, I just felt like there's got to be something better. So I'm really excited to hear that we're looking back to when all of us were in school and we had cooking in our school. I just want to say that I really appreciate that because we definitely need to reduce the amount of plastic. And I'm glad that they're going to take on those grain initiatives that we've already moved forward with. So really great job on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of questions. First, and I too am excited about the scratch cooking and the slow roll on eliminating some of the waste. I know we all agree on that. I know we do. How do you arrive at the guaranteed number of $880,000? Did you just like put a bunch of paper in a hat and drew one? I don't think so. How did that happen?
We provided in the RFP so much information on the program so they could see financially where we have been in the last several years, where the opportunities were. They certainly identified a few things during their presentation where they thought they could really have a positive impact. One was definitely with the scratch cooking and increasing participation. In fact, their CEO is a chef. So they're very, they call themselves very chef-forward, right? They think first about the cooking of the food. And by doing a good job there, they increase participation, which is their number one KPI is increasing participation. Because if you increase participation, it kind of, everything else good follows. And the way they do that is a lot of this scratch cooking that they're doing. But they take a look at all of our financials, everything that we've been doing and have in place, all the employees we're paying, what our labor increases are for next year. And then they take a look at what they think they can do to the program, and then they provide what they think they can profit from. And so as Adam said, if they don't meet the guarantee, then they have to make up the difference. Now, there are some exceptions to that, right? If we have school closures for three days in a row and they're not allowed to serve any meals, that's obviously an impact. And we have a formula that they follow for that. So then their guarantee gets lowered by that exception because those are things sort of beyond their control. But it's really down to a very, you know, important but finite list of exceptions. And, you know, over the years, we've always had a guarantee of some sort. And we've been very diligent at really holding the food service management companies to them.
So safe to say it's a partnership, obviously.
100%.
100%. Speaking of partnership, when I think about this chef-forward, and I think about all our wonderful chefs and our CTE programs and our students and the fact that we are hospitality city, maybe down the road, we could do some academic partnering because it seems like it could be a wonderful opportunity. Did you talk about that?
Those things have been discussed, actually. Multiple of the proposers brought forward the opportunity to work with our CTE programs. And in fact, when we were at one of the Squat Hug, I think it was, we showed them a little bit of what was going on over there.
Which is really good stuff on a smaller scale.
Yeah, I think they all kind of see that that relationship as being a good one to interact with the CTE program or culinary.
Well, thank you for your work. I really appreciate. I think this is exciting. I think Arrow Mark helped us get through some tough times as well, and I recognize that. And I just want to offer that if you ever need a meal taster, I'd be happy to, I know where the building is. I can, I'll wear something on my hair, you know. So let me know if you need me.
There were some nice perks to being in the room during the presentations.
JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mike Reese.
Welcome, Mr. Reese. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Ms. President, Board Members, Superintendent Urs, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Mike Reese, Vice President with SFE. And I can't tell you how myself and some of our team members here are excited to kick this partnership off, as you termed it, because we view all of our school district partners as a partner. I feel remiss that we didn't bring food this evening for you guys, but the selection committee managed to sample that for you. I did want to take one second. You know, we look at a lot of opportunities to partner with districts around the nation, hundreds and hundreds each year. I will tell you, this is probably one of the most or top five most thorough evaluations and processes that your administrative team and selection committee did. And that's reassuring to us as well because now we feel like we're aligned with the district that wants the same outcomes and goals that you were looking for. And that's tremendously important to us as well. We did have an opportunity to tour some of your campuses. And I think something that was very exciting to our operational team was that you had men and women in the kitchens, on the registers, in the delivery trucks, the kitchen managers were excited about doing the right things for the students. And our goal in this partnership is to help train and equip them with those skills and tools so they can better serve the students. So I know you have a big agenda. I just wanted to say thank you. We're looking forward to this partnership. And I know we're going to hit the ground running very shortly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reese.
That's all I have.
Well, goodness, Andrea, whenever somebody goes through one of your RFPs and praises you as being one of the top experiences ever, that definitely speaks to the quality and the expertise of this team. So congratulations. All right. So I will bring it back here for a motion.
I do. I have a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the award of Request for Proposal 90-P-01-25-AS Food Service Management Company for term of one year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, in the estimated amount of $533,585.15, plus other reimbursable expenses such as salaries, benefits, and food costs to Southwest Food Service Excellence LLC.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Trustee Nicolette. We have a second by Vice President Mayberry. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries, seven to zero. Let's get cooking. I just couldn't help myself. Samples. Throw some brownies at us next time. All right, team, that closes item 4.02. And we move on now to item 4.03, the presentation and possible action to approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price II, GMP II, from Plenium Builders as the construction manager at risk, CMAR, for the Edward C. Reed High School Modernization Project, CMAR 24-80-C-03-MS, in the amount of $68,697,213. Approval of an owner's contingency in the amount of $4,219,467, for a total of $72,916,680, and approval of Washoe County School District's owner CMAR construction agreement. This is an item for possible action. And so I see in front of us, we have our Chief Facilities Management Officer, Tammy Zimmerman, and then also our Assistant Director of Procurement and Contracts, April Anderson. And I think we also have another guest out there in the audience as well. Yes, but I'll let you introduce him. Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith, trustees. I am so excited to be here today. This is the first high school modernization project that comes out of our approved facility modernization plan. And we've been working really hard to bring this to you guys. We did bring you Guaranteed Maximum Price Number One in December of 2024 for the switch gear so that we could get that ordered and on, on time for this project. And then we came to you guys in February of 2025, and you guys approved construction phase funding for this project, which allowed our construction manager at risk, Plenium Builders, to then put that out to bid, those scopes out to bid to subcontractors. And we're happy to be here today for the Guaranteed Maximum Price Number Two, which has a scope of adding about five additional additions onto the building, which has music, it has athletics, it has learning spaces, and also some interior improvements, right? With single point of entry, other security upgrades. But then we also get to move to the outside of the school as well and start looking at some upgrades at the stadium with a new practice box, some grounds buildings for them, and the synthetic turf on the football field. So that culminates into an approximately 70,000-square-foot addition for this school and for these students and staff so that they can provide that educational equity that we so wanted with that facility modernization plan. And so I'm so happy to be here today. And with that, I'll turn it over to April Anderson, our Assistant Director of Procurement and Contracts.
Thank you, Tammy. I'm going to highlight the process that Plenium Builders use to arrive at the final guaranteed maximum price. Although we in the district don't personally facilitate this part of the process, we do partner with them along the way. First, I just want to highlight that they issued subcontractor bids to pre-qualified subcontractors on March 24th. They held a mandatory pre-bid walk for abatement and selective demolition contractors at Reed High School. And then the project was out for interested bidders to evaluate for about a month. And then they opened sealed bids on April 23rd. And as required, per NRS, 338 district representatives were in attendance. And so we witnessed all the opening of all of the bids. And there were 46 trades that they advertised for as part of this process. And a lot of interest was generated through this project. And we received multiple bids on most of the scopes. And then after evaluation of all of that, the district, meaning the purchasing department and capital projects departments collaboratively evaluated Plenium Builders' final presentation of the guaranteed maximum price and of the amount that Tammy mentioned, the $68,697,213. And then one thing I want to highlight here that I think is really cool is that of those subcontractors selected and recommended as part of this contract, 70% are local in Northern Nevada, which is really neat. And then, so basically, just to kind of summarize, we're asking that the board approve this contract for GMP II for $68,697,213, with the owner's contingency of $4,219,467, for a grand total of $72,916,680.
And if you guys do approve that today, we will start construction as soon as school gets out. And then we hope, right, right, that we're going to hit the ground running with it. So, and then we'll conclude that construction in fall of 2027.
I like that. And to continue the food analogies, for sure. I'm really grateful that you brought up the percentage of the providers that are from our community. It is not lost on me that we are doing this work with the community's money. And I am a firm believer that the money that our own neighbors are contributing to the construction of these projects results in good-paying jobs for our neighbors. And this is how we participate in that cycle. So I am incredibly glad to hear about the number of local companies that will be involved in this work for our local children. Before we go to public comment, I know I could not move a minute further without letting Trustee Westlake have a quick say, and then we'll go to public comment if there is any.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Ladies, I'm going to give one example of what this project is doing. I had the absolute delight to meet a student, and she said she didn't mind if I gave her name, Ashley Stockton. She is a Reed High School student. She is a Reed High School student, graduating senior, and a passion for music. She's in the band. She also volunteers at Sky Ranch Middle School, teaching music there. And she's going on to UNR, and she eventually wants to come back and teach our students. And one comment she made to me in our, in, when we were talking was even though I'm a senior and I won't get to enjoy it, I am so glad that future students that are in band are going to be able to practice and maneuver and choreograph on their football field and not have to use spray can paint and make a field in the parking lot. They'll actually, she said, I can't wait for the band members that are going to be at Reed to experience that. And that's what, that's what this is doing for those kids there. And I just appreciate it so much. Thank you.
JJ, do we have any public comment?
I have no cards for this item.
All right. It is worth, I know he's not going to come up and give public comment, but we would be remiss to not acknowledge our partner in this work, Toby Basta from Plenium Builders. Thank you so much for the way that you've partnered with us. All right, I'll bring it back here to entertain a motion. I don't think anyone would get in the way of that light.
I know. Thank you. This, I'm so honored. I would like to make the motion to move that the Board of Trustees approves the guaranteed maximum price two, GMP two from Plenium Builders as the construction manager at risk, CMAR, for the Edward C. Reed High School Modernization Project, CMAR, hashtag 24-80-C-03-MS in the amount of $68,970,213. Approval of an owner's contingency in the amount of $4,219,467 for a total of $72,916,680 and approval of Washoe County School District's owner CMAR construction agreement.
All right, we'll second that.
Yes. All right. We have a motion by Trustee Westlake. We have a second by Vice President Mayberry. Quick change to the record. It's actually $68,697,213. Can you give me a verbal agreement that that's the number that you meant? Okay. And then...
I'm so excited. I don't believe...
That's okay. I think you gave him a little more or a little less. I'm not sure. But that's okay. The rest of the motion stands. I just wanted to quickly correct the record on that one number. And then, do we have a verbal agreement from our second?
Uh, yes.
Okay, very good. All right. So we have our motion by Trustee Westlake. We have a second by Vice President Mayberry. Seeing no lights on. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, everyone. And that closes item 4.03. I'm just going to do a request to anyone that we have visiting with us that has not put a comment card in for closing public comment. Now would be a really great time to get that card into JJ. All right. That now moves us on to the last item in this section, item 4.04. This is the presentation and discussion on the school closure and change of use process and possible action pursuant to Board Policy 9071BI2 to request that the superintendent return to the Board of Trustees with an amendment to Board Policy 7086 to provide guidance when determining changes of use for school facilities. This is an item for possible action. And we have again with us, I don't know how many times is this now, our Chief Operating Officer, Adam Circe, with no cooking jokes on this one. So.
No cooking jokes, no PowerPoint either. Good evening. My name is Adam Circe. I'm Chief Operating Officer for the school district. The purpose of this item is to begin a conversation with the board. We always frame our interactions or often frame our interactions within board policy. But similar to an item that we had just a couple of months ago regarding rezoning, wanted to initiate potential changes to board policy related to school closure for the purposes that we'll describe here. So this is really just the beginnings of a conversation that may or may not include board policy revisions. So that's, that's where we want to get to tonight. Backing up a little bit. This is back to the beginnings of the 2023 Facility Modernization Plan. So as most of you are aware or recall, we went through an 18-month process to evaluate the condition of our facilities and the trajectory of our projected enrollment and look at ways to modernize our existing facilities. And, and in many instances, the, the 2023 FMP called for what's termed in the document as school repurposing. So that's defined here in a couple of different ways to come up with alternative uses or a change of use to a school facility to better serve the community in other ways than traditional K through 12 public education. In fact, that document, as described in the staff report, specifically named five schools for repurposing. And then they sort of punted another 13 schools as trade-up scenarios. They said these may be modernized into the future, they may be repurposed in the future, but it's likely more than five years into the future and difficult for us to say. I'm highlighting that to, to emphasize the scale that this, of this conversation that we're beginning. When we talk about repurposing, you can talk about school closure. And what are we going to do with those school buildings in the future? So that's kind of the background. As we have begun implementing the FMP now two years, the Reed Modernization that we just heard, others that are under construction or about to begin construction include, of course, Vaughn Middle School. We're going to hear in the coming weeks and months about Matthews Elementary School. We're in design on major projects at Loader and Palmer and many others in the near future. One that's under construction now that has led to the change of use action from the board is Sted Elementary School. So that's, I think, the first tangible example that might serve as a good point of reference for the conversation tonight. But know that there are a number of other schools that were named in the FMP and that will come into consideration in the near future. Also, at this time, we're in the midst of an administrative facility or central services facility modernization plan study. So it's likely that this study will also include consideration of potentially closed or repurposed elementary schools to serve the district in a manner other than a K-12, K-12 school. So all of that context, you know, also kind of noting that the, the repurposing of a closed school is in, in many ways, you know, an equally important part of any of the FMP projects, right? When we're talking about modernizing this school, in many instances, we'll find that it results in a consolidation of enrollments, and it results in a repurposing. And so as, as successful as we may be with the new school or the modernized school, I believe it's equally as important that we put care and create a positive or trade-up scenario, repurposed outcome for the school that no longer serves as a traditional elementary school. So that is definitely a lagging element, you know? We're rebuilding the school. We're modernizing the school. First, it's several years into the future. But we're now several years beyond the starting line of the FMP. And so it's time that we start talking about what and how do we want to come up with solutions for these repurposed schools. So as a little bit of background, the staff report goes, says a lot of these same sentiments. But then it, it begins with some suggested high-level guidelines that recognizing that every community is unique, the buildings are unique, the needs of the surrounding community may be different, and that our needs may change over time. Rather than coming up with very specific guidelines and, and also rather than coming up with one-off processes each and every time, starting from a general sense of guidelines and having a conversation with the board so as to allow the staff to, to further this work before coming back to you, of course, with specific potential solutions. That's what we're trying to do here with this item. So the, the staff report on the second page generally outlines sort of five tiers of potential reuse or repurposing of these schools. And simplistically, we just, we just work these up ourselves for consideration. But simplistically, it would be if, if a school is no longer to serve for the purposes of K-12 education, could it be used to serve students, used by the district to serve students in another fashion? That would be our first, first priority, of course. Second priority, could it be used by the district to serve our staff? So think a central services office building, not unlike the Brown Center where Capital Projects and Purchasing are currently housed, used to be a school, is now repurposed by the district in service to staff. Third criteria, could it be repurposed by community partners in service to students or youth? So when I say community partners, it could be cities or counties, or it could be nonprofits, foundations, or some combination even of a private partner perhaps who is serving as a, you know, a third party administering a program in service to youth within one of our repurposed schools. Next step, same logic, partnerships in service to adults in our communities, whether it's staffer or adults of some service. And then kind of final criteria, more of a, a permanent disposition or basically a sale of the property to the public. So just sort of a framework to run down. And we've, we've thought about a number of different uses, kind of getting ahead of ourselves. You know, I speak in generalities about partners, but, you know, I've had conversations about this upcoming opportunity with major partners such as the city of Reno, such as the city of Sparks, such as Washoe County, such as the Boys and Girls Club, such as the Chamber of Commerce, the Children's Cabinet. They're all aware of this impending change and all are eager to become partners if, you know, the opportunity presents itself. We also talk about functions. So I mentioned like serving, school district serving adults. Well, let's go in order. We have oftentimes special programs that need spaces and homes, specifically early childhood centers is a growing need across our district. And so that's been a concept that's come up at times. Serving adults, I've talked about administrative facilities. Could it be a satellite office for a school district central services department? That's a concept. And then that third option, working with partners to serve either students or adults, or youth or adults in our community is where we've had some of the most intriguing conversations. I think I want to share an example from, and I've got examples from multiple different districts, but nearest to us in Carson City, they had a similar situation where they had, it's a smaller scale. I want to say like four classrooms in an underutilized building that they entered into an agreement for actual childcare, like zero to three-year-olds. I don't have all the specifics, but a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, a partnership that is given first priority to school district employees with remaining seats available to the public. But I think we all are, have some degree of familiarity with the scarcity or underserved of childcare in our community. Also recognizing that our school buildings are outfitted to serve children today. So probably the least amount of upfront investment in terms of renovations. We turn this into an office building for adults, it's going to require more modifications than we turn it into a facility to serve students. These are just concepts at this point, but I think there's opportunity in our community. There's going to be opportunity in terms of our facility portfolio. And I think there are partners in our community that are interested in initial partnerships. I also want to mention that my, and this is a lot my thinking, folks, so this isn't intended to really just be a conversation, that our initial agreements should strike an appropriate balance, of course, with the needs of the community and input, the needs of the district and input, but also I think an opti, optimization of probability of success and flexibility. You know, there are some really tantalizing extreme examples of what might be possible at this point. I just want to ensure that that building provides a valuable service, that the lights stay on, stay in good condition, that the agreement that we might strike is appropriately flexible for both parties because we don't necessarily know what the future might hold. I'm not likely to be recommending that we jump to a, a permanent solution or an extremely long-term solution, even a sale. I think we could get there. But initially, again, I think the success of the FMP, the success of the individual projects, when we're talking about closing schools, we need to navigate these first, fierce years very thoughtfully. I think there's opportunity to do that, but I wanted to emphasize that's where my mind is at in terms of balancing what we could do at these different school sites. So I think I shared most of the remarks that I, that I wanted to impart as far as what I've done and my thinking on this. And then kind of bring the conversation back to the group in terms of what we're hoping to achieve tonight. I believe this is agendized for possible action, but really the goal is, you know, we're not prepared to make any changes to the board policy, nor is that necessarily mandatory. We could navigate this conversation outside of board policy. I did mention in here, there is a board resolution empowering the Chief Operating Officer to certain property transactions. Regardless, any such transactions would likely need to come back to the board and the superintendent. This is really to have this conversation on the record so that the public knows that we're really thoughtfully considering what happened, what the next chapter. I mean, these have been anchor tenants in, in these communities for generations. How can we honor that going forward while still taking advantage of the opportunity to provide a service to the community within a facility that's no longer needed by the district for the purposes of K through 12 education? So I think, I think that is it. Thank you for letting me make those remarks and look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
I have some thoughts on that, but JJ, can we go to public comment first to see if we have any comments from the community?
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
Hello. Hello, school board members. My name is Pablo Navaduran, and I'm a New York resident for 15 years, worked as a resident for 25 years. So there you go. So I support this, this approval for changing the language. The we purpose of a, a K to 12 school that mostly elementary school. So especially a Smithville Elementary School going building brand new elementary school Pine Campus. If, you know, with this, with the combined with Dawson Elementary School, if they want to come, go ahead, go for it. So I want to talk about the, the we purpose of a Smithville Elementary School. So because Smithville Elementary School was, was open in 1962. And that school is long overdue, you know? Smithville used to be overcrowded, but not anymore because we're declining women, women at the New York area, less children. That mean less school population, less funny. So, so we're cause well. So we know, we know I support of a school naming community. I created a school naming community and all kinds of stuff. But, you know, for the, for Smithville Elementary School, for we purpose Smithville Elementary School, I support the new admin building should be built on a new Smith, on a Smithville campus. So it should be, it's more centralized, it's more centralized than everybody thinks. So, so I will support that language. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navaduran.
That's all I have.
Thanks. So I'll, I'll jump in with a few ideas and then hear from my colleagues too. I like the guiding principles that you have here. I would personally like to see in a revised policy a direct reference to community input. So that could look like a lot of different things. So I'm not suggesting we would spell out exact... So that could look like a lot of different things. So I'm not suggesting we would spell out exact tactics, but rather that a policy should reflect a commitment to gathering community input with a focus on each individual neighborhood's needs while still maintaining a regional macro perspective. So what do I mean by that? I mean that, and again, I would not suggest in a policy that we would spell these things out, but what I'm getting at is that we have a tremendous opportunity. Thanks to WC1 and the work of the facilities modernization project, we're able to imagine assets we have in schools embedded within communities. We are able to take those children and trade them up into facilities that match the spectacularness of every single school that we've been opening. And we're also able to take those schools that would be discontinuing in that K-12 model and offer the community some other type of service with it. And so I would be very interested in seeing a change in the policy that just directly talks about our commitment to community voices, an understanding of what each community needs because you may put something in one neighborhood different than another. And just also making sure that people see that reflected in the policy in some way or another because we tell people all the time, refer back to the policy. And I want to make sure that the community knows that their voice would be considered in this as well too. How that comes to be, I would defer to the superintendent because we set the what, they decide the how. But I would like to see that commitment to a regionalized view and individual neighborhood view reflected in there somewhere.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So when I was on the Education Alliance, we used to do the Run for Education. That was years ago. I had sweaters and every year the sweaters would say, we run for 60,000 reasons. Well, I have a sweater that says 66,000. And I know we no longer have 66,000 kids in our schools. And that's a reality that we all have to face and come to bear with. A lot of us don't want to talk about it, but the reality is we don't have 66,000 anymore, which eventually is going to result in some buildings, some structures will have to close at some point. It's inevitable. I like this being deliberate with understanding that if and when that occurs, that it's not going to be a negative thing, that we are being deliberate and looking at options to provide new and positive possibilities for that vicinity, for that neighborhood. I like these ideas, these five listed. I really like the childcare facility because having recently having a baby, recently had a baby, I know we were, we got on the list a year before we even had the baby. So I know that that's out there. And we're fortunate because where the child is at now is actually at her job. So I can imagine how great it would feel if that, not saying that that's what it will be, but just possibilities, right? Because that's what we have here, multiple possibilities. I like the possibility of employees, our own employees, being able to have something like that. And also for our communities, I hope, because our employees are our community as well. So I like this approach and I appreciate it. And and we do, we have to be forward-thinking and acknowledge what's coming and be prepared to provide a positive resolution to those issues. So, thank you.
This is so exciting, going from that like 100,000-foot view that we started with the FMP to now we're getting to the point where we're actually thinking about what those facilities are going to be. I remember we had that big list and we we were in those meetings and we're like, it could be this and it could be this. And we were dreaming really big. And I I just want to say that I really appreciate that your list is being kind of, it's bringing it in so that it's not like we're not dreaming of building apartment complexes or something for for staff. Like that, that's a really big dream. And you're really talking about very tangible things that the communities need. And so I just want to second what President Smith just said is I I would like to see some guidance to ensuring that the community has some kind of input or process, which I know, Adam, you and I have talked about a million times, of making sure that we're including the community in it as much as possible. So that I just wanted to second that. And I just want to say that I really, really appreciate this list. And the words that really stuck out to me are guiding principles and framework. And I think that as we continue along with all of this work, that if as long as we continue to put things in some kind of a framework of how do we close a school? How do we move teachers from one school to the next? As long as we kind of have that in, you know, in some bubble, and maybe there's some exceptions, but generally, I think it helps people not to feel so anxious about the changes because that's really what it is. We're just, change is hard. And we say that all the time in zoning, when we were on zoning, change is hard and we know that. And so I just want to say I really appreciate this forward-thinking and making sure that we can kind of accommodate some of that anxiety for the various communities that are going to be impacted. And how exciting that we're going to have this investment in some of our our oldest neighborhoods. And they're going to get these opportunities to have beautiful new facilities that have modern learning spaces. So again, thank you for that. And I just want to second the community input.
Thanks. I'll preview my board report now, but what was it, two weeks ago? COO Cersei gave some remarks at the groundbreaking of a Reno Housing Authority project that's going to be directly next door to the Debbie Smith CTE Academy. So things that I think about and I wonder about are all those different services. What can we turn that space into that strengthens our communities, strengthens the families? We know that the cost of housing is a huge barrier to also producing students for the district. And so I think anything that we can offer that touches on any number of things that families need, whether that's housing, services, educational opportunities, a bustling center for staff members. I think all of those things are are really worthy. Trustee Westlake.
Thank you, President Smith. I'm I'm just going to add some, I love everything that everyone has said. And I I love this list. I really do. And again, like Trustee Woodley had mentioned, I like having daycare available for our teachers, our administrators. I know the hospitals do that, Renown. I have several family members and friends that work at Renown, and there's a childcare there for their employees. I think that's a benefit that it it's going to help our our staff and alleviate some of the the burdens. The only thing I do want to mention, and it's just, I think we need to be cognizant of this. We just essentially were served a bill for three quarters of a million dollars for them cutting some of our special ed funding. Well, they cut our special ed funding, basically. So when when we're thinking these things through, I think we have to be careful not to add to what our costs are because we're 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 struggling right now. We are really struggling with what what's on our plate. And biting off too much, then are we able to do everything as well as we would like to? Or are we just going to do a lot more and do it mediocre? So that's my only thing. I don't want to end this with negative because I love serving our community. I love helping teachers and in the community, having daycares. But those buildings, we're adding another building. So we've got lights, water, keeping the doors open and staffed. And then we're going to retain another bit, the building that we just made the new building for. And that's more lights, water, and staffing. So I just think we have to be really careful. I would like to do everything on the list, but we've got to be careful, especially right now. There's only so much money and we want to do things well. So I'm not saying this is terrible or no, just, we just got to be careful. Thank you.
Quickly, there's there's five options that are part of the staff report. I'm just wondering if we're if we're limited to those five options or maybe we'll have another bite of the apple where we can, we can expand some of those options or maybe even include an option that's somewhat of a of a catch-all that's just not perhaps as restrictive as some of these. Does that make sense?
Yeah, these are, these are draft suggestive in nature only. There will certainly be additional opportunities to discuss this. And that's part of what this is about is just to get your, get your ideas thinking. And if you have any specific ones to share them tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, your five questions to ask, I viewed it viewed it as questions I think are spot on. And I would recommend that they be included, student, staff, and then the community, and then service to adults and sale of property. And then to be able to divi- define those in an administrative regulation and procedure. But I think those five questions are excellent and and they're they're high-level thinking, and I think they belong in a policy. And I will concur with with my colleague, Trustee Westlake. I think it's very important that we continue to maintain our scope of expertise, and that's education. There are so many wonderful ideas and so many wonderful ways that we could support students, staff, families, and the community. And we are an educational business. We're not dealing with widgets, of course. We're dealing with human beings and their life, but we're a business. And and I always want us to focus on that. We are a business, we are a model of education and how to do business. I come from childcare 25 years, and I will tell you, it's a business too. And if I would have tried to focus, if I would have gone over the guardrails and tried to focus on something else that could be needed. For example, at one point, we talked about parents are very busy. And wouldn't it be cool if they could take a dinner home with them when they pick up their little sweet Diane? And then we looked at how much it would cost and and what it would mean and how that business got away from our business model and how it would interfere with us providing the early care and education in high quality that we were known for. So we said, yeah, great idea. No. So I think we have to, like Colleen says, remember what we're doing. The ideas are endless. There are so many ideas. And I I think most importantly, that partnering is what has gotten us the, some of the quality variables that we have today is the partnering that we do with community members. And again, to remember we're a business of education and we do it well and we want to continue to do it well. Thank you.
And and just to clarify, just to make sure that there's not a misunderstanding here, for some of these sites, we would ultimately be leasing or in a contractual relationship for them to be operating these services on the site, right? So it's not, although we certainly could, we have the Cold Springs Early Education Center. But in many of these cases, we would be talking about leasing out these locations for the operation of other entities, right? Can you just clarify that, please?
Sure, thank you. So, you know, options one and two generally suggest if the district needs facilities for, to to provide services that we're already providing. You know, we heard earlier tonight about leased spaces that are current, you know, could perhaps those services be provided out of an owned facility that used to be? That would be an example where we would retain ownership and responsibility for that facility for the purposes of doing a program that we already do or that we have to do. If we're going out to a partner, we'd be looking for a relationship that first and foremost repurposes the facility in a way of value to that community. But a very close second would be to relieve the district of the overhead associated with that facility. Now, whether that's through a lease or a joint use agreement can very much be negotiated. But ideally, we're relieving the district of the overhead associated with a facility that we no longer have a need to operate. Maybe we're retaining ownership for it, et cetera. And that that partner is providing the services either in exchange for a fee with the people, their customers, but not as a fee from us. We're not hiring a third party necessarily. This would be my concept of that type of a partnership. And then potentially, and actually turning into a revenue generating type of opportunity for the district. So all of those concepts are very real, still a bit fuzzy. But I just appreciate the opportunity to clarify that, yes, of course, if we already provide that service or have that need to continue, but if we would, you know, repurpose the building in that way. But if we're talking about a partnership and a service that we maybe don't provide, but is complementary to our mission, that would not be an additional cost to the district. And that would not be a scenario where we're maintaining the the building or maintaining the electric bills, things like that. That that would be kind of the framework for the partnership with, you know, whether a private vendor or another agency, that type of situation.
Thank you. Uh, Madam, if I may, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees directs the Superintendent return to the Board of Trustees with an amendment to Board Policy 7086 to provide guidance when determining changes of use for school facilities.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Clerk Woodley. We have a second by Trustee Hall. Seeing no lights on for further discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much. Very exciting work. Thank you so much, COO Cersei. Now that closes item 4.04 and section four in its entirety. And we will move on now to section five, our reports, starting with item 5.01, our student representatives' report. And I thought we had one more meeting with you, but I believe that this is Annie's last meeting. So we're going to miss you. We are so excited about whatever degree you feel comfortable. I know everyone would like to hear about your plans for after graduation. We've been so honored to have you at this dais with us.
Thank you and thank you for this opportunity. I'm sad for it to be my last meeting, but the next one's on my birthday, so I will not be here. But after after high school, I'm going to be going to Boise State and studying neuroscience. And then I think I'm going to double major in accounting. And then I'm going to minor in French and study abroad sometime in between. But I'm pretty excited about that. And it won't be too far from home, but I definitely am excited to get out of Nevada. So I'm excited about that. And that's kind of the big stuff for me. And then for my position, we have our elections, they were going on. So we had a student sitting in here today, and she's probably going to be the president and representative for next year. So if she comes to the next meeting, you guys will be able to meet her, and she's great. But all of our options were great. And hopefully, they will all be encouraged to come to more meetings because they all have valuable opinions. But I am so lucky to have served in this position. And I'm really grateful for the opportunities I've had and what I've gotten to accomplish while here.
Well, we're so proud of you too, Annie. And I see we've got a bunch of educators in there. This is what you did right here, double major neuroscience. And so thank you all so much. You've all played a part in this. And Annie, we're so, so proud of you. Congratulations. We'll see you up on the stage. All right, that closes item 5.01. And we'll move on now to item 5.02, our board reports, starting with Clerk Woodley. We're going to make our way around this way.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Well, I did take a week off, but that was great. I celebrated Mother's, Mother's Day for the whole week. I did have a great opportunity to visit Incline High School with several of my fellow trustees for ribbon cutting. That was a beautiful event. I was able to participate in some Mark interviews at Sparks High School, communities and schools. They're doing a great job out there, getting people in the community to come into the school and help our teenagers prepare for the real world and applying for jobs. So that was great. I got to visit Mamie Tolls with Ms. Martin, and I also visited Sarah Winamuka with Ms. Abel. And they were both lovely experiences. Thank you.
Okay, gosh, it's been an exciting couple of weeks. I attended the semifinal soccer game for Sun Valley Elementary and Gom Elementary. And my Lions won, so they moved on. This was the parent-teacher home visit awards night, and Stacy Stoich, she rocks it at Echo Loader. These teachers are amazing and other staff members that are going out and doing the home visits. I mean, what a way to get connected. Then I also attended the ribbon cutting at Incline. Diane and I. Diane and I got into the groove of Men in Black here. The kitchen there, the kitchen, the culinary there, I mean, just walking through this kitchen, I, I think I could become a better cook. I wouldn't even have to cook anything. Attended the AACT Dinner fundraiser with trustee Nicolette to raise money for our FCC LA participants to go to Florida. These kids are amazing. They are so articulate and just driven. I mean, I was just so happy to be there. Then I did the NASB, the NASB gig at Virginia City for a board meeting and training and lots to discuss with my fellow trustees because things were, we're all having to tighten our belts. This was kind of funny, it was all on AI and the, the things that can happen, the bad things, the good things, but in 19, I can see it if I look here, 1998, don't get in the car with strangers, 2008, don't meet people from the internet alone, and then 2019, Uber, order yourself a stranger from the internet to get into a car with alone. So it's funny how we've all, it's how it's progressed. RTC, I got to go and thank them for their, their MOU, their partnership with us, 17 and younger, ride for free, not just to school, but to where they need to go. Here's the Lincoln Lion. And the finals was two of my schools, Lemon Valley and Lincoln Park, and I didn't even have a problem cheering because they're both Lions. So I was yelling, go Lions, go Lions. This is what I was talking about before, this is Ashley Stockton, she, I spoke, I was the keynote speaker at WRW and they gave her a thousand dollar scholarship. She is amazing. I'm not gonna reiterate everything I said. And then I got to go and read at Sun Valley Elementary, again with my kindergarteners and it's just amazing to be in their presence. It truly is amazing. Thank you. Oh, look at me, did I have any time left?
No.
I didn't, but I didn't go over, okay, I'm improving.
Good job.
Thank you.
Um, okay, quick, I didn't, I don't have any pictures this week. So I attended the Incline ribbon cutting and then also met with Alexis Hill and some other community members in Incline while we were up there to learn a little bit more about communities and schools in Incline. They've started in the middle school mid-year and it's going really well, so that was really cool to learn. I went to the debt management committee meeting and also attended a small group meeting here about the FMP. My two big things from this last two weeks is that I got to sit on the selection committee for the Silver State Brigade Commander for JROTC.
Oh my gosh.
Oh my gosh. I mean, the future is in great hands with these kiddos and I just wanna shout out, the brigade commander is Deb Lester from Reno High School and the brigade commander sergeant major is Gavin Perkins from Galena High School and both of them blew us away, just really, really impressive. And then finally, I got to attend Galena High School's grad walk and that was such a special, special thing, seeing those kindergartners light up. My, my daughter is graduating from Galena, so I, I got the pleasure of doing that and that was really cool and such a great tradition that we have in this district and I just, I, I hope that we always continue to, to take our high schoolers to our elementary schools because it is so inspiring to see how excited the young kids get, but also the seniors, they were so excited to get to see some of their old teachers and take pictures with their principals. I mean, the hugs going around were incredible, so I just, I hope that we always continue that. And that's it.
Alrighty, I was out, so that was the end of my report. I'm kidding. Now, I was out on travel last week for work. I did go to the parent teacher home visit, micro mini conference and it was great to be there, a part of that. And then I do see that I am scheduled for the Van Gorder 25th Year in Celebration, so we're looking forward to that. And other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Good, I have four minutes now. So I visited Grace Warner and had a lovely chat with two early childhood special ed teachers, very enlightening. The Incline High School new building ribbon cutting, oh my, what a wonderful, and the views, they're just absolutely beautiful. Anderson Elementary Safe Routes to Schools Bicycle Safety Event, it was so much fun. I wish I would have had my bicycle, but I got to hold the stop sign, that was pretty cool. Lenz Elementary, visited the principal and the classrooms and they're doing some wonderful things. Huntsburger, the student art show, oh my goodness. It was, it was absolutely breathtaking what these students can do under the guidance of many adult parents, visitors, art, people who love art and help them. TMCC High School, their Senior Exits Project, got to see one of my very own, oh, now she's an adult, Chiara, who was in the childcare center that I referenced earlier. I did some department visits, the grants department there, they have this wonderful cross-training approach, so everybody, everybody can do everything, it's really wonderful. Nutrition Services, I got to, this evening we voted on the overwrap machines, my goodness sakes, they are huge. I got to see the, oh, the, the machine where they put in the, the hot foods and cool them down before they put them into the refrigerator. I had a great visit with the Special Education Department. Parents as Teachers Home Visiting Conference. I attended the Tools for Successful Secondary Home Visiting, raise your hand if you want to visit high schools and middle schoolers, it would be absolutely wonderful to visit them in their homes. The Northern Nevada Legal Aid Luncheon, AACT Dinner for FCC LA and I'm wondering how they're doing, I think that's in July, when, when they go to the national conference. And then the NASB meetings and we had a wonderful training, Nevada Association of School Boards, we had a wonderful training on artificial intelligence, the, the cautions, the, the wonderful aspects of it and how we're all of a sudden paying attention to it and it's really been around for a very long time, so call me slow. And then I attended the Early Childhood Advisory Council Meeting, that's a governor-appointed position and everybody's worried about budgets, I'll just end with that. Everybody's figuring out how we do this so we can do what we need to do and survive it all.
You know, I'm always skeptical who's tuned in watching our board report, so I'm glad there's a, there's an audience. One picture I'll share, this is my visit to Jaywood Raw last week. This is a green team, these are fifth graders that created a recycling program schoolwide and they also created a manual that they can pass on to other fifth grade classes. Just a wonderful opportunity for me to, to connect front and center with our students and, and those are really the best, the best school visits. Throughout the last week too, I've had an opportunity and pleasure to attend a dozen of art shows throughout the district. Also was invited to attend an Innovative Leadership Institute that's put on by the, the WEA with a number of, of their members that are pursuing, have a desire to pursue leadership roles. I want to give a shout out to Kendra Fox, she's the Director of Curriculum and Instruction and was one of the Women of Achievement last night that I, last, last week rather, that I attended with, with my colleague, President Smith and the Superintendent and the staff. And so it's been a very productive week with a number of other school visits. I, I think though, with a few minutes that I have on, on my time left, I want to share this Time Magazine article, it's the Class of 2025. I've been saving that, this, this, this issue since 2013 because I have two humans in my household that are part of the Class of 2025 and, you know, there was, and I'll keep this brief, there was an incident at Reno High late last week that I know really disgusted and sickened a lot of us, but I think our community and our, our district should, should recognize that, that those students don't, don't reflect our student body, they don't reflect the Class of 2025. I personally have witnessed my, my children and their friends interact with, with each other, different ethnicities, backgrounds, they give high fives to students with disabilities. It truly is an inspiring class and so it's just important that, that incident does not reflect the class and our district as a whole. We know the tolerate, the, the, the love and just the progress that we have made with one another, the, the tolerance and respect that I see. I know trustee Hall has a, a student as well that's graduating in 2025, as does the Superintendent, which is probably pretty unique that there's three people behind this dais that have four of our students that are gonna receive diplomas. Well, I hope mine receive diplomas here in the next week. Yeah, but anyways, that was on my mind and I appreciate that opportunity. Thank you, President Smith.
Thank you. All right, JJ, I was wondering if you could get the first photo teed up? And then I'll go ahead and start, so I was a guest speaker at Judge Kendra Burchi's Class of Aspiring Educators, Counselors, and Social Workers at UNR. I also attended Wooster's JROTC event along with trustee Nicolette and also Vice President Mayberry. I was interviewed by a former Reno High School student who's a current UNR student for her coursework. The next picture is I joined Dr. Nicolette and Superintendent Ernst in hosting Attorney General Aaron Ford at Mount Rose and also Reno High School. I was very proud to speak at a press conference at the Legislature on Public Education Funding and why we need to pass the plan. I delivered succulents to Hunter Lake Elementary School as part of Educator Appreciation Week that were gifted to us by Sierra Water Garden. The next photo that's up is I spoke at the Vaughn Topping Off Ceremony and also got to meet JJ's mom, which was really amazing. I attended an event in support of Courage House, raising awareness on child sex trafficking. Took a coffee with trustee Westlake, with a woman named Janet Lombardo, who's a founder of the Human Trafficking Prevention Alliance. I gave the keynote at the UNR Honors College Convocation. As I mentioned before, I also attended the Reno Housing Authority Groundbreaking where COO Circe gave comments, that's the new development right next to the W. Smith CTE Academy. I spoke at the Incline High School Expansion Ribbon Cutting, attended the Youth Security Forum at UNR, was very proud to cheer on Kendra Fox and Teresa Paulson at the Women of Achievement Luncheon last week. And then I really loved last week, I was part of a review panel of teachers that have new ideas for the district. So that's kind of a double board report because I didn't do one from before, but just a little bit of an idea of the work that we do. And I'll use my closing moments to make a statement about the criminal acts that occurred at Reno High School. So hate in any form, whether it's racism, antisemitism, or any other kind of discrimination has no place in our communities, our schools, or our hearts. These acts not only harm individuals, they tear at the fabric of who we are and the connections that we have. So what I'm asking everyone is to please stand now together in support of Reno High, not just in condemnation, but also in commitment to listen, to learn, and to carry forward these lessons into our lives. I cannot emphasize enough that what happened, what occurred was a violation of Reno High School, not a reflection of it. I am proud of how the Reno High School community and their Class of 2025 has shown heart and unity through this. They are the true models of the school's legacy of respect, honor, and strength. Thank you. Go Huskies. All right, that closes item 5.02 and brings us now to item 5.03, our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Smith, thank you trustees. For the sake of time and, and making sure that we are able to listen to maybe some of the comments that we have here tonight, there, I agree with so much of what was, has been said and the only thing that hadn't been mentioned as far as an event that was maybe attended was our attendance at the Collegiate Academy over at University of Nevada Reno. It was really an honor to have an opportunity to speak to our seniors who have all received dual credits. We had representation from 11 of our high schools and it was really a fine moment for WCSD in partnership with University of Nevada Reno, celebrating their accomplishments with dual credits. And so that was a really nice event to be a part of. I also want to take a moment to recognize that our hearts and our thoughts and our prayers go out to Sparks High School, go out to HUG High School, and go out for the loss of people in our community. And I am incredibly grateful to the staff at those schools, to the support personnel within our district and their willingness to be out there and support a situation that is very difficult, that is a real reminder of everything that we do. I also want to address, and I did see earlier some Reno staff members, but I want to open by, I want to say that our school district, we did, we put out a message over the weekend in wake of the criminal acts at Reno High School. Washoe County School District condemns any speech that divides our students, families, and communities. The speech fosters, this speech fosters exclusion, it fostered disrespect and inequality and it goes directly against what we stand for as a district and as a community. I want to express my gratitude to the many, many students and staff members at Reno High as well as the alumni and community members who upon learning of this attack on the school responded with the values of Reno High School and that was respect, honor, and strength. These individuals stood up in the face of these acts and they said loudly and clearly that this is not who we are at Reno High School, this is not who we are in Washoe County School District. They cleaned, they repaired, they replaced, and this was done from the moment this situation occurred, all the way through late last night and into this morning. They call, they answered the call and we applaud their efforts and we stand with Reno High School. I'm grateful for the counseling professionals in our district who are not only working with Reno High, but our other schools that I've just mentioned. Their presence, their compassion, and their support of our students and staff has helped bring calm in the wake of these senseless acts. Additionally, I want to be clear about any misinformation that may be out there. An assessment of the costs created by the damage at Reno High School has not yet been completed and any dollar figure out there may be premature. Finally, please know that an investigation is ongoing and is being conducted by the Washoe County School, uh, School District Police and I have no doubt that it will be thorough and it will be just. Investigations of this time, they take nature, they take care and discretion and our patience as adults and community members is required to ensure that we don't jeopardize the integrity of an investigation. So I wanted to be very clear about that. And I want to acknowledge trustee Annie Batavia. Annie, it has been just an absolute honor to work with you, hear your perspective, your student representation. I hear about the list of things that are in front of you after this and we all in this room have no doubt that you are going to achieve high heights and great things are ahead of you, but your perspective to our board has always brought such a wonderful student representation. Your leadership and your passion is exemplary as you have influenced school boards throughout the entire state to desire to have student representation. So I just wanted to close with, you've done a great job, Annie, and it's been an absolute pleasure and we all applaud you and we all applaud your effort. pleasure, and we all applaud you and we all applaud your efforts.
That closes item 5.03, and we move on now to section six, our closing items, starting with item 6.01. All right, so I'm glad we all just got a good clap out because I will share, as I do before all public comment, first, it is lovely to see all of you. So second is we have our rules of decorum up on the screen, and one of those is that although we are very, very tempted to support our fellow speakers, and we love what they say, you know by now that as the meeting manager, I keep applause or responses to a minimum, and that's not just for this group, it's for all groups. So absolutely, we can celebrate everyone when we're out in the foyer, but we try to make sure that each person gets their three minutes, and then we move on to the next person as well, too. I will also mention that if any of the trustees need to get up or need to excuse themselves for just a moment, please don't take that as a personal sign of whoever is up here. We're going to go ahead and get through all the public comment, but anyone here, including myself, may just need a moment and then we'll come back in. So please don't take any of that personally if you see anyone getting up. And so on that note, JJ, who are we welcoming first?
Adriana Publico.
Welcome. It's President Publico in this room. Very welcome, President Publico.
Thank you. Superintendent, I'm sorry. President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board, thank you. My name is Adriana Publico. I am a long-term employee of the Washoe County School District. I'm also the current president of Washoe Professional Technical Association, which represents approximately 200 professional and technical employees who work in every department and every high school in our district, some of whom are here with me today, offering moral support. I'm speaking with you here today about our overage process this year because approximately seven protecs are facing job loss on June 30th in 34 days. That's seven protec positions. And since early April, WPTA has met nine times with district staff, most recently today, and especially after today's meeting, I am encouraged that we are on the right track and we're going to get some answers and we're going to get some clarity on this process, but I still have some outstanding concerns, and the clock is ticking, right? 34 days is not a lot of time. My first concern is there are some employees who are facing job loss who have not yet been notified, and if that happens, and I hope it happens soon, if it's happening, then I would request that the district consider extending those positions by a month or two to give these people 60 working days, which is the guidance in our contract, and I know it says whenever possible, I get that, but I do think it's the right thing to do for these people who may be out of work on July 1. I don't ask that lightly. I know it is possibly the worst possible time to ask for money, right? And I get that that costs money, but I do think it's the right thing to do by people. And I know that the uncertainty at the state and federal level doesn't help, but I don't think that's going away, and I think we have to be smarter and get ahead of it. The other thing I would, and in the meantime, I'm working very closely with the district and our other associations to try to find these people jobs, even if they're not equivalent positions, just to try to keep them in the district. So WPTA is committing to that, to working with the district to make sure that we can do what we can. The other thing I would ask is that when positions go away, like right now, we're in a mental health crisis, and yet some number of mental health professionals are losing positions, and that's crazy to me. But if it has to happen, could we have a needs assessment based on where we need these allocations and not just go by where the funding is moving away, right? Like, I don't know what the criteria are, I'm not in this realm, but could we go based on student needs to figure out where we reallocate those positions when we lose them? Because I think we're facing job scarcity and funding scarcity in many different areas, and once again, I don't think that this is the last year we're going to face that. And I would like to thank the superintendent for his partnership and the district for working with me on this. I reached out to the superintendent directly last week because I hadn't heard back from district staff in over a week, and he responded almost immediately. He met with me that same day, and I do think we're on a track to solve all of this. And my hope, oh, sorry, thank you.
Thank you very much, President Publico. I know that buzzer comes in awfully quick. Thank you so much.
Lisa McNeil.
Welcome. That's Lisa McNeil. Welcome, Ms. McNeil.
Good evening. My name's Lisa McNeil, and I'm here as a concerned member and former board member of Washoe Professional Technical Association, or WPTA. We all understand there are some very hard realities to be faced in our current budget situation and possibly continuing into future budget situations. This afternoon's budget presentation included a familiar statistic that 90% of the district's expenses go to pay salaries and benefits. And to me, this statistic highlights that we are a very human-centered organization, and that humored center, human-centered approach is behind the work that all of us here at the district do. As we are forced to identify professional technical employees whose positions cannot be funded next year, we hope that the district leadership and human resources staff will reach beyond the legally required contract language and try to take a humored center, human-centered approach to our reduction in force possibilities. There may not be vacant professional technical positions available for all of our displaced employees to move into. Before these valued employees are separated from the district, we hope that every effort will be made to look at their skills, experience, and qualifications, and try to match them to any other vacancies here at the district outside of WPTA. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much, Lisa. I appreciate that. Thank you for advocating.
DeLisa Crane.
Welcome, DeLisa Crane. It's nice to see you.
You too. President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board. For the record, my name is DeLisa Crane. I'm a current WPTA member and a former board member and past president of APTA. There are currently 10 protecs in our department, many of whom are federally funded and do the critical work of family engagement and supporting our native youth in our district every day. They watch the federal and state economic news closely, and they are worried about the security, the future security of their jobs on most days. There are also brand-new mothers and their parents themselves. With the tremendous economic uncertainty and possible future reductions in grants and revenues in upcoming school years, I do agree with previous comments that we need to approach these processes with as much notice to employees as possible, as Adriana mentioned, and with a human-centered approach, as Lisa mentioned. Our staff can't care for our kids and our community if they're worried about their own kids and families. So thank you for your consideration and for your service to our community and our district. Thank you.
We feel exactly the same way about you, DeLisa. Thank you.
Wiley Evanson.
Hi, Wiley Evanson. Welcome, Wiley.
Hello, hello, thank you. President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board. My name is Wiley Evanson. I'm a longtime grant-funded employee with the district, and I'm currently the WPTA protec representative that represents everyone in our union. In this role, as a protec representative, I work with folks who are directly impacted by these grant positions, loss of grant funding, budget cuts that we're doing across the district. And when staff hear the word "overage" or that they may get wind that their position is going to be eliminated, it carries a lot of uncertainty and it carries a lot of emotional weight, along with other things that they're dealing with in their own lives, in their community, in their schools. And staff are often given notice without a clear understanding of what that means moving forward, and then what their rights are in the contract and what their options may be. So that's my kind of role, is trying to help them understand what that looks like and trying to help them understand their rights and what their options may be. So I'm hoping in my call with my colleagues as well, that we can kind of clear up that process and that system to be able to help these employees feel that there's a sense of clarity, some confidence, and that they feel supported. I know the district is working and is committed to retaining knowledgeable and highly effective and qualified candidates and staff, so I hope that we continue doing that moving forward. So thank you so much for listening, and thank you for your leadership in building a school district where not only students, but staff are seen, heard, and feel supported. Thank you.
Thank you for being a voice for your association and for your fellow workers.
Michelle Smith.
Welcome, Michelle Smith.
Thank you. Good afternoon, evening. My name is Michelle Malik-Smith. I am the mental health professional over at North Valleys High School. I just wanted to share my experience. About six months ago, I was told that the funding for my position was not going to be continued. Pretty devastating for me. This is my favorite job I've had in 23 years, working in mental health. I'm a little bit higher up in the seniority with the MHPs, the mental health professionals. However, I had no communication or explanation on the overage process, so a great deal of uncertainty, which is obviously impacting my personal life, not knowing if I would have a job next school year, so it's been a pretty devaluing experience as a school district employee for me. I was told last week that I would have a position, so that was exciting, but I don't know where it will be or if it's going to work for my life situation. I wanted to share my experience specifically at North Valleys High School. I currently work with students who have either limited access to services or no access at all. So all the kids in my caseload either don't have insurance or any transportation or a parent or a guardian that can get them to therapy. So as a school-based mental health professional, they're able to see me before school, after school, during lunch, or during electives. All the students that I see are either for therapy or for crisis intervention. I also see students who are caught on campus or close to off-campus using drugs, alcohol, so I see them for substance abuse programs to try to reduce recidivism and hopefully curb that kind of behavior. So far, I've had pretty good success. To my knowledge, I think that North Valleys High School is either the biggest, one of the biggest schools in the district, so I'm pretty nervous about a lot of these kids that I serve falling between the cracks with not having any services in that region over in the Golden Valley area. To speak to Adriana's point, I did want to stress that I hope positions are allocated according to the needs of the schools and the students and not specifically to where the funding and the allocation is. That's it. That's all I wanted to share. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Michelle. We appreciate you. Thank you for using your voice tonight.
Melinda Bauer.
Welcome, Melinda.
Hello. Hello, Superintendent Ernst, President Smith. It's like I've been seeing a lot of you lately. Hello. I'm actually here tonight as a site representative for WEA at McQueen High School. As representative, we're the voice of our members, and I was asked to just read a letter from one of our counselors, so that is my job and that is all I'm going to do. So, and this is from a counselor at my school at McQueen. My name is Brandy Parnell, and I serve as a school counselor at Robert McQueen High School. While the future of education in Nevada holds many uncertainties, I find reassurance in the efforts and comprehensive support provided by WEA. Their commitment extends beyond their membership, positively impacting all educators within Washoe County School District. One aspect of the WEA that I value is its member-driven approach. We have critical issues on our campus, such as class size and counselor caseloads. Many teachers are managing class sizes approaching 40 students at McQueen, and my fellow counselors and I are responsible for nearly 400 students each. These conditions clearly signal the need for systemic change. Our union is responsive and active at the legislature and on campus, trying to find creative solutions to this urgent issue. I appreciate the WEA and believe it's the best organization to represent us. Our representatives listen, care, and respond in a variety of ways. They are our voice, and they aim to enhance the work and lives of us educators, which in turn strengthens outcomes for students and families. End of letter. So I just wanted to say I'm really grateful that Brandy asked me to come and share this because I am the union, and this is what I do here and everywhere else that they ask me to be. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Melinda. And will you please let, and you said the name was?
Brandy Parnell.
Wonderful. Will you please let Brandy know that, one, you did a great job?
Thank you.
And two, that we appreciate you passing her voice forward.
Awesome. Thank you.
Veronica Koppel.
Welcome, Veronica. Nice to see you.
All right, so I had it all written out, and then I had to pare it down, so it's over here on my phone. Okay, so, President Smith, not superintendent currently, rest of the board of trustees. Nice to see most of you again. You know me. Those of you who don't know me, I am Veronica Koppel, and I'm a teacher with a long history with WCSD and with the state of Nevada. I'm a fifth-generation native and a product of this school district and the state's K-12 education system. I've been employed by WCSD for 16 years. My son is also a current student. When I tell you I have skin in this game, I hope you realize just how much skin I have. As you're aware, the legislature is currently discussing several bills related to education. Some of those bills, if passed, would allow for the state to take over low-performing schools and convert them to charter or private schools. Some of them would allow for the immediate removal of the superintendent and other administration. I want to discuss low-performing schools and measures you can take to help bolster the scores and, more importantly, provide an equitable education to all. Accountability. The student behavior which is being tolerated at our schools is atrocious. We have high teacher turnover and burnout because we have students who feel it is acceptable to spread racist messages. We have students who steal things from teacher desks, tell teachers to F off when told to put their phone away or charge, change into school uniform. And as has been witnessed by the entire community in the past few days with the incidences at Reno, Spanish Springs, and Reed High Schools, generally laugh in the face of any sort of authority. Due to these behaviors, a majority of the students in our classrooms are unable to learn what they need to reach their full potential. Teachers are unable to teach, and many new teachers quit before they even get through their first year. The frequent flyers with behavior issues keep coming back. They go home with a slap on the wrist, enjoy their time off, and then come back emboldened. These flyers disrupt the learning of the other 90% of students, so much so that many of these kids, including my son, don't want to go to school. Parents are pulling their children out and homeschooling to avoid the disruption to their child's education. If we expect students to be able to learn and thereby perform, we need to create a positive environment where teachers can teach, where teachers want to stay and build relationships and school culture, where students are held back rather than pushed through the system, and where they have consequences. We need to have consequences in systems which are more than burnt-out teachers giving up their lunches for detention. We need accountability for families when their child willingly destroys school property. When laptops are broken on purpose, the learning is disrupted. When a kid has to walk across the school due to the vandalized bathroom being closed, the learning is disrupted. When a student turns a page in a book only to find it torn out or destroyed, the learning is disrupted. When I have to stop teaching to call the office or write a referral because a kid told me to F off for their phone usage in class, the learning is disrupted. Then we wonder why we have low scores across the board. We wonder why we can't keep teachers. Our students deserve the best we can give them, and we can't do that without your support. Please hold our students and families accountable, and please create policies that allow our students to learn without the frequent flyers just getting a slap on the wrist. Please help us to provide the best education and experience for the 90% of kids who want to learn. We are exhausted, and we need to know that our administration and board respects us enough to put a concise plan in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Koppel.
Maria Renee Castello.
Maria Renee Castello?
Castello.
Castello.
Yes.
Welcome.
Hello. It's good to see you all again. My name is Maria Renee Castello Rivera. Hopefully, I can get through everything I want to say this time. I've been a teacher for nine years, six of them here in Washoe County. I hold a bachelor's degree in elementary education, a master's degree in STEM, and teaching credentials in both Nevada and Idaho. I currently teach third grade, I'm a mom to two school-age kids, and I'm a proud member of the Washoe Education Association. I always like to start with the positives, so thank you for being open to hearing our concerns, and especially for your collaboration with the association during the 2325 negotiation cycle. Your willingness to invest in our schools, our educators, and most importantly, our students does not go unnoticed. I'm here to speak again about the association. The advocacy negotiations and tireless efforts being made are not just random decisions. They are a direct reflection of what educators across this district are asking for. From the leadership we've elected to the priorities being championed at the table, the association is representing us. But the impact of their work goes far beyond just certified staff. Our students benefit from every gain we make, every policy, every contract improvement, every resource secured. That's why we're the Education Association, not just a teachers' group. We're fighting for a better, stronger system for everyone involved in education. Here are some real tangible examples of the advocacy. For teachers, educators are not compensated when their prep time is taken. Elementary school teachers can finally get paid for extensive work involved in extracurriculars, work that I know firsthand takes a ton of time and energy. This was funded by the education or the association and supported by you. Educators are finally starting to catch up to the cost of living. For students, in elementary schools, they have access to more extracurricular activities, things that bring them joy and help them feel connected to the school. More qualified educators are stayed in the profession, which means students are learning from experienced skilled teachers. Class size, when kids aren't competing with 30 others for attention, they thrive. And the association... and the association continues to fight for smaller, more manageable class sizes. For the district as a whole, I, along with many of my colleagues, have gone to Carson City to testify and advocate for increased funding for our education and in turn, our districts and school. We're working toward policy changes that uplift our entire district, not just one group or position, but all of us. Superintendent Ernst, trustees, please continue this momentum. Keep working in partnership with the association and keep moving forward, building on the progress started under our previous superintendent. Going backwards isn't just a misstep. It's a step back our students and teachers literally cannot afford. Their future and Nevada's depend on the decisions we make now. Thanks.
You did great. You had thirty seconds still to go. And you were worried. Thank you so much, Maria Renee.
Jennifer Malatary.
Welcome, Jennifer. Very good to see you. Oh, come on. Look at that dress. Teacher dress, if I've ever seen one.
Well, thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and the Board of Trustees. My name is Jennifer Malatary, and I am currently the dean of students at Trainer Middle School. I do have to say, Colleen, I miss working with you at Dilworth. And Woodley, we did have a staff versus student volleyball last week, and I wasn't able to coach the students this time, so the staff did win. So, you missed out on that one. Sorry. I am here to speak on the behalf of the WEA, as I am also an at-large director on the Board of Directors for the WEA. Over the years, many of us have felt what it means to work in a system where the culture and climate have been unhealthy. We've seen the results in every climate survey. We've felt it in staff lounges, in team meetings, and in conversations after school, where people ask themselves, "How much longer can I do this?" The truth is, WCSD has had a history of top-down decisions, poor communication, and a lack of respect for staff input that created a toxic environment. It wasn't just frustrating, it was demoralizing. And we cannot pretend that didn't happen. But, things have started to shift. And that shift didn't come from a single person or a single change. It came from years of work by educators, classified professionals, site administrators, board members, and associations, all pushing in the same direction. Because when we improve the working conditions for staff, we improve the learning conditions for students. This progress is fragile. It's been years in the making, and it came at a cost, one we don't want to pay again. We cannot afford to go backward. We cannot return to a culture of fear, silence, and disengagement. I stand here, not as a leader or a title, but as one of the many who have fought to improve this district. That's why we need real collaboration and support from district leadership. My name's Jennifer Malatary, and I am the union. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Latia Cole.
Welcome, Latia.
Oh, I'm sorry. No worries. Thank you, boards. Thank you, President Smith and Superintendent Ernst and the Board of Trustees. My name is Lolita Cole. I am a special education teacher at Milton Elementary. I've been in the district for over twenty-four years. Trustee Nicolette has been very supportive in our special ed department, and especially with me at Milton Elementary. My name, again, is Lolita Cole. Let's talk about morale. It's not as a buzzword, but as a real thing that impacts every corner of the district. When morale is high, everything works better. Relationships, instruction, attendance, safety, even test scores. When morale is low, it doesn't matter how good your curriculum is. You lose people physically and emotionally. The Washoe Education Association has made it a priority to center morale in every conversation we have. Whether it's advocating for caseload relief, planning appreciation efforts, or pushing back on policies that demunite our work, we focus on what keeps people engaged and supported. Because here, what we know, when educators feel heard, respected, and trusted, they stay. When they're empowered to do their jobs and given resources, they need, they don't just stay. They thrive. And when staff thrive, students benefits. It's that simple. The association isn't about pay or policy, it's about people. We fight to keep good people in the profession because we know how much students lose when experienced staff walks out, and especially in special education. We already seen too many of our colleagues leave, not because they're stopped caring, but because they were pushed out by burnout and neglect. We are building something better, but we need to keep investing and the effort not withdrawing from it. Morale can be repaired with one-time words of appreciation. It takes consistent action and shared responsibility. And I want to thank you guys for letting me speak. And go Husky. I'm a ninety-seven Husky alumni, so go Husky. So, in conclusion, that's why we need a real collaboration and support from district leaders. My name is Lolita Cole, and I'm the union.
Thank you very much, Lolita. And before we welcome up our next speaker, for those of you who come to public comment, you've probably heard me say this. I very much appreciate that you said thank you to us, but I assure you that we are thankful for you. These are your minutes. This is your time, and we cannot do our work unless we hear from you. So, I assure you that the gratitude first starts from us to you, to all of you.
Toni King.
Welcome. Is that Toni King? Kane. Welcome, Toni.
Good evening. My name is Toni King, and I'm a proud graduate of Washoe County School District, a teacher at Lincoln Park Elementary, and my school site representing it for the Washoe Education Association. For the first time in a long time, we are beginning to feel a sense of stability in our school district. It hasn't come easy. It hasn't come quickly, and it certainly hasn't come from the top down. It has come from educators who stayed through the chaos, from staff who showed up when they had every reason to walk away, from board members who listened, from associations that organized, and from parents and community members who demanded better for our schools. That kind of stability is rare, and it's valuable. We should be doing everything in our power to protect it. That starts with collaboration, not forced consensus, not checking boxes. Real, honest collaboration where people are invited to the table and heard. The Washoe Education Association has led with that spirit. We've worked in partnership, even when it's hard. We've pushed for transparency, fairness, and the long-term health of our district, not just for our members, but for everyone. We are finally back on course. Our students are poised to grow. Our staff are finally beginning to heal. We don't want to lose that progress now because of a breakdown in leadership or communication. We believe in collaboration because we've seen what happens without it. It's not something we're asking for, it's something we all deserve. That's why we need real collaboration and support from district leadership. My name's Toni King, and I am the union.
Thank you so much, Toni.
Wendy Ritter.
Wendy? Welcome, Wendy.
Thank you. Thank you. Kind of nervous. I am a graduate of the Washoe County School District. I have been employed since two thousand as a special educator and have been part of the union since two thousand. So, I am here to talk about our union and school site support. The real education, work of education, happens at the school sites, in classrooms, on playgrounds, in cafeterias, and in those moments before and after the school bell rings. That's where the challenges are most directly felt, and that's where the support matters most. Our association doesn't just operate at the district level. It lives in every school. It lives in every building rep who meets with the principals to solve problems before they escalate. It lives in members who help a colleague navigate a complicated situation, answer questions about contract rights, and advocate for fair treatment when things go wrong. When a site is struggling, it is often the association that steps in first, not to fight for the sake of fighting, but to fix, to work things out, to make sure people feel safe, valued, and supported. Because when a school staff don't feel safe and respected, the students feel it too. We don't broadcast every time we solve a problem behind the scenes, but those daily site-level wins, those moments of support and solidarity are what keep the system moving forward. That's what makes this work so meaningful. It's not abstract, it's personal, and it's real. And the more supportive school sites are, the more stable our entire district becomes. That is why we need real collaboration, support from district leadership. My name is Wendy Ritter, and I am the union. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wendy.
Christina Stewart.
Welcome, Christina.
Yep, this is nerve-wracking. Hi, thank you for having me.
You're okay. You can always just look at me. But I promise, everybody who says that, they're so afraid. You're doing a great job. But if it makes you feel better, you could just look right here. We'll talk.
That's what I tell my students, too. My name's Christina Stewart. I teach at North Valleys High School. I've been there for nineteen years, and my son is a current sophomore there. So, really invested in the Washoe County School District. So, I would like to talk about protecting educator rights. Sometimes people forget that education is a workplace. It's a place where adults, just like any other profession, deserves dignity, yeah, deserves dignity, safety, and respect. This means contracts matter, processes matter, fairness matters. Our association is often the only line of defense when rights are violated. When someone is targeted, mistreated, or ignored, we're the ones in the room making sure the contract is upheld. We're the ones reminding the system that these are people, not positions. And this work is not about being combative, it's about accountability. It's about making sure educators don't have to choose between doing their job and protecting themselves. Because when staff know their rights and are protected, they are freer to do what they love. We've seen what happens when those protections are ignored. People leave, people suffer, and the students suffer. Protecting educator rights isn't about protecting the union. It's about protecting the people who show up every day to make the system work. It's about justice. It's about equity. It's about making sure no one ever feels like they have to go through a hard moment alone. That's what we mean when we say that we have each other's backs. This is why we need real collaboration and support from district leadership. My name is Christina Stewart, and I am the union.
Christina, you killed it. Now, we know she's sandbagging when she's like, "Oh, I'm so nervous." You did great. You did great.
Stacy Roybal.
Welcome, Stacy. Very good to see you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stacy Roybal. I have been working in Washoe County School District for nearly twenty years. I work at Jamani Ranch High School. I'm a nationally board-certified teacher and a proud member of the WEA. Most people know what the union does at the school and district level. Fewer realize the role we play at the state level, at the legislature, where decisions are made that impact every classroom in Nevada. Over the past few years, our members have shown up to the Capitol to testify, myself included, to meet with lawmakers and to fight for fair funding, better working conditions, and policies that actually serve students. We've helped pass legislation that increases pay, improves safety, and supports educators in meaningful ways. These aren't easy wins. They take coordination, strategy, and a deep understanding of how policy affects the day-to-day life of school staff and students. And we don't just advocate for our own members, we advocate for the future of public education. The truth is, without this kind of advocacy, many of the gains we've made would never have happened. And that advocacy doesn't stop when the legislature adjourns. It's year-round. It's tireless. And it's built on the belief that public education is worth fighting for. That's what the union really is, a voice, not just for our members, but for the communities we serve. That's why we need real collaboration and support, district leadership. That's why, and my name is Stacy Roybal, and I am the union. Thank you.
Thank you, and I absolutely agree, public education is worth fighting for. Thank you.
Derek Callahan.
Welcome, Derek.
President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, board members. My name is Derek Callahan. I'm a native Nevada and born and raised in Reno. I've worked for fifteen years at Lemelson STEM Academy, and I love my job. When people hear the word "union," they often picture a classroom teacher. And yes, we are teachers, but we're also much more than that. Our association represents and advocates for a wide range of licensed professionals whose work is essential to student success. We support counselors who help students manage anxiety, trauma, and life beyond school. We stand beside social workers who connect families to critical services and intervene in moments of crisis. We fight for speech-language pathologists who serve dozens of students at multiple sites with complex communication needs. We elevate the work of the English-language instructors, helping students find their voice in a new language. We advocate for occupational therapists and physical therapists who help students develop independence and mobility. We stand up for the educators who work with students who are blind, visually impaired, deaf, and hard-of-hearing, ensuring access and dignity for every learner. And we support deans, staff who are constantly balancing student safety, behavior, and campus climate, often without the resources or backup they need. Deans are the bridge between intervention and discipline, and their work is critical to maintaining safe, inclusive school environments. All of these professionals bring expertise, compassion, and unwavering commitment to their students. They're often behind the scenes, but they're never behind in impact. The Washoe Education Association works to make sure these roles are recognized, protected, and valued. Because every student deserves access to the services and specialists they need to thrive. This is why we need real collaboration and support from district leadership. My name's Derek Callahan, and I am the union.
Thank you very much, Derek.
Tanya James.
Welcome. Is that Tanya or Tanya? Tanya. Nice to have you with us. What does your shirt say? I'm in...
I'm in charge. It's Hey Hey.
Oh, Hey Hey the Chicken.
All the kids like the...
I love Hey Hey the Chicken.
So, okay. My name is Tanya James, and not only have I graduated from Washoe County School District, I now teach at North Valleys, and I've been there for about ten years, and I love my job. But I want to just keep talking about elevating student growth. There's certain, there's some things incredible happening in our schools right now. After years of disruption, uncertainty, and recovery, we are finally seeing signs of growth in our students, in our systems, and in the sense of stability returning to our schools. That growth didn't happen overnight as the result of years of hard work, of educators showing up day after day of support, of support professionals, keeping things running, of families trusting us, and of community members and board trustees advocating for a better way forward. We are on the edge of something meaningful. Our students are showing more confidence. Classrooms are regaining rhythm. Teams are starting to gel again. We are poised for a breakthrough, and it's happening because of the incredible people in this district. We've done the heavy lifting to get back on course. What we need now is to stay on course. This means not, we cannot afford to lose ground because of a breakdown in support. We cannot backslide into the instability and fractured leadership that held us back for so long. When you support educators, you support students. When you lift up staff, you lift up schools. That's not just a philosophy, it's a formula for success, and we've seen it in action. Let's not take this moment for granted. That's why we need real collaboration and support from district leadership. My name's Tanya James, and I am the union.
Thank you so much.
Shelley Sales.
Is that Shelley Sales? Welcome, Shelley. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Sales. I've been teaching for thirty-seven years, thirty-three of them in Washoe County School District and twenty-seven at Silverlake. I am a nationally board-certified teacher. Thank you for listening. Educators don't clock out when the final bell rings. They're volunteer at community events. They organize food and clothing drives. They help students navigate housing insecurity, family instability, and trauma that goes beyond academics. Our schools are not just places of learning, they are pillars of our community. And educators are community leaders, whether they're officially recognized or not. The Washoe Education Association has always been, always seen its role as bigger than just contract negotiations or grievance support. We believe in being a community partner. That means standing up for public education, fighting for the resources our students need, and stepping in when our families are struggling. We've worked with local nonprofits, supported school site initiatives, and used our platform to amplify the voices of the people closest to the ground. Sorry, I'm short.
That is okay.
Because public schools don't just serve the community, they are the community. When district leadership supports the association, they're not just supporting the union, they're supporting an entire ecosystem of... they're supporting an entire ecosystem of care and connection that strengthens everything around it. This is who we are, and this is what we do. That's why we need real collaboration and support from district leadership. My name is Shelley Sales, and I am the union.
Thank you so much Shelley. I love that, public schools are the community. I love that.
Kaitlyn Cooper.
Welcome Kaitlyn. Thanks for being here.
So first off, hello. Um, and yes, my name is Kaitlyn Cooper, I teach at McQueen High. Right now I get to work with sophomore English and creative writing, but I also get the honor of co-advising our National Honor Society, LGBTQIA+ Club, Black Student Union, and our advocacy club. We are in a moment where student mental health is not just an added concern, it's a defining issue. Anxiety, depression, trauma, and grief are realities that walk into classrooms every single day. And our educators are often the first line of support. Counselors are managing caseloads that exceed national recommendations by hundreds. Social workers are navigating complex situations with limited resources. Nurses are addressing not only physical health, but the emotional toll students carry. And teachers, regardless of subject, are being asked to manage behaviors and emotional needs in ways that go far beyond their training. The Washoe Education Association has consistently raised the alarm and advocated for more comprehensive student supports. We've called for additional staff, lower ratios, more trauma-informed training, and better structures for crisis intervention. Because here's the truth, students cannot learn if they do not feel safe. They cannot grow if they are overwhelmed. And staff cannot meet these needs alone. It takes a system, one that invests in people, builds strong support teams, and listens to those doing the work on the ground. We are not just advocating for educators, we are advocating for the mental health and safety of the students we serve. It's not a luxury, it's a necessity. That's why we need real collaboration and support from district leadership. My name's Kaitlyn, and I am the union.
Thank you Kaitlyn.
Sandy Spear.
Welcome Sandy, and that's Spear, right?
It's Spire.
Spire, welcome Sandy.
Get that all the time. Thank you for having me tonight, I am Sandy, and I have been, I am finishing up my twenty-ninth year teaching. So I have one more to go, and I think in all my years, I, I'm proud of many things. But, uh, I think what I'm most proud of is that I am as passionate today as an educator as I was day one, or at the university, you know, getting ready to, to enter this profession. So I appreciate all of you, um, advocating for us, and hearing us, and, uh, being there to make those hard decisions for us. So, let's talk about elevating classified staff. No school works without classified staff, none. They are the first faces students see in the morning and the last ones they see before heading home. They prefer, prepare food, drive buses, keep buildings clean, and support instruction in classrooms. They are the heartbeat of every school site. Even though the WEA does not represent classified staff, we advocate alongside them. Because we understand that when one part of the system is hurting, the entire system suffers. We believe in solidarity across associations. That's why we work in close partnership with our counterparts representing classified staff. We support their efforts at the bargaining table, we amplify their concerns, we show up for their victories and their challenges alike. And we do this not because it's convenient, but because it's the right thing to do. Our students are served best when every adult in the building is supported, respected, and compensated fairly. We've seen firsthand how collaborative efforts between associations can lead to real improvements across the district. Imagine what we could do with true partnership from district leadership. This isn't about titles or turf, it's about teamwork. And we know what's possible when we stand together. That's why we need real collaboration and support from district leadership.
My name is Sandy, and I am the union.
Thank you, before you walk away, we gotta take a look at that shirt.
Oh, yeah, this is kind of an older one, yeah.
But I love it, the future of Nevada is in our classroom, thank you, they sure are.
Brianna Etcheverry.
Is that Brianna?
Yes.
Brianna Etcheverry, welcome.
Hey. Superintendent Ernst, President Smith, and board members, thank you for your time. Um, my name is Brianna Etcheverry, I am a product of Washoe County School District, and now a very proud speech-language pathologist, um, supporting our students with their complex communication barriers. I first would like to recognize the month of May being National Speech-Language Hearing Month. Um, and I would also like to further talk about, um, innovation and education, educator autonomy. Educators are some of the most creative people and problem solvers you will ever meet. Every day we adapt, design, and innovate with often very few resources and even less time. Whether it's reimagining a lesson to meet students' needs, or building out an entire system of support from scratch, educators bring imagination and ingenuity to everything they do. And yet, far too often, innovation is stifled. Prescriptive mandates, ever-changing directives, in a culture of compliance can make even the most passionate educator feel boxed in. The Washoe Education Association works to protect educator autonomy, not because we want chaos, but because we trust our professionals to do what's best for students. We believe the best solutions come from those who work the closest. And we've supported site-based initiatives, defended educators' rights to make instructional decisions, and pushed back on top-down policies that ignore the reality of classrooms. Innovation thrives where trust exists, and disappears when micromanagement takes over. If we want to retain and grow great educators, we need to treat them as professionals. That means collaboration, not control. We are not here to say no to change, we're here to help lead it with the people who know this works best. That is why we need real collaboration and support from district leadership. My name's Brianna Etcheverry, and I am the union.
Thank you very much Brianna.
Amber Callahan.
Welcome Amber, thanks for being with us.
Good evening, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, Trustee Woodley, it's always nice to see you at Billingshurst and the rest of you. Uh, I am here to talk tonight with you about the trust and transparency. Um, we feel trust is something that is built slowly, intentionally, and through con- consistent action. In a school district, trust between leadership and staff is essential. It's what allows people to bring their best selves to work. It's what creates the conditions for innovation, risk-taking, and long-term growth. And yet, in our district, trust has been fragile. Years of top-down decisions, inconsistent messaging, and the lack of transparency created a climate of fear and confusion. Many staff stopped speaking up, not because they didn't care, but because they felt it didn't matter. The WA has worked to rebuild that trust through listening, through action, and through holding the system accountable. We've been honest when things needed to improve, we've been collaborative when there was opportunity, and we've been clear that our goal is not conflict, it's progress. But rebuilding trust is a shared responsibility. It cannot fall solely on staff, district leadership has a critical role to play in restoring faith, ensuring transparency, and showing that partnership is, isn't just words, it's a way of doing business. We can't return to the old way of operating. We've come way too far, and we know what happens when people stop trusting the system, they leave it. Uh, that's why we need real collaboration and support from district leadership. My name's Amber Callahan, and I am the union.
Thank you Amber.
Jenny Camacho.
Welcome Jenny, you're right there in the front row.
I know, front row. Hi, my name is Jenny Camacho, and I am a product of Washoe County School District, and I am a proud educator, I've worked for Washoe County School District for fifteen years, and I am part of the WA Board, um, and I am here to represent WEA. When people say "the union," they sometimes think of an office, or a president, or some abstract force that exists separate from schools. But the truth is, we are the union. Every single educator, counselor, nurse, therapist, and professional who shows up for kids day after day, we are the union. We are not separate from the district, we are the district. We are the people who keep students safe, engaged, learning, and cared for. And the work we do isn't just important, it's irreplaceable. Over the last few years, we have seen what's possible when people come together. We've seen the healing that collaboration brings. We've seen the progress that's possible when respect is mutual. And we've seen what happens when educators feel empowered, not sidelined. We don't want to go back, we've seen the costs of disengagement, mistrust, and unilateral decision-making. We are on a better path now, and we are committed to staying on it. This is about more than contracts or titles. It's about the future of this district, and the future of public education in Washoe County. We are proud of the work we've done, we are proud to stand together, and we are asking, very simply, to be supported in continuing this work. That is why we need real collaboration and support from district leadership. We are the union.
Thank you Jenny, wonderful. I love the Jan, that's hands out there too, that's totally allowed, that's totally allowed.
Joshua Novick.
Welcome Joshua. Novick.
Assistant Lieutenant Ernst, President Smith, and the trustees, thank you. Um, I teach first grade at Lois Allen OMG School, and I'm also one of the building representatives for the WEA. Um, public education is not just a service, it's a promise. A promise that every student, no matter their background, neighborhood, or circumstance, will have access, access to opportunity. And that promise only works if we invest in the people who deliver on it every single day. The Washoe Education Association fights for that investment, not just in terms of salary or benefits, but in time, training, leadership development, and professional respect. Because when we invest in educators, we invest in the long-term success of our district. This is not a short-term game. The seeds we plant today will bear fruit for years to come. That's why the decisions being made right now about staffing, funding, collaboration, matter so deeply. They're not just about today's classrooms, they're about tomorrow's graduates, tomorrow's teachers, and tomorrow's communities. Our district is on the verge of something better. We've regained our footing, students are beginning to thrive, staff are beginning to believe again. We cannot let that momentum stall because of lack of investment or short-sighted decision-making. We have the opportunity to lead with, lead with vision, let's not waste it. That's why we need real collaboration and support from district leadership. My name is Joshua Novick, and I am the union. Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you very much Joshua. Um, so we only have one more card, so if you are sitting in the audience and you want to speak, all right Pablo, come on up, now is the time. Um, so if anybody wants to speak and you have not put your card in, now would be a great time to do it.
Janet Roberts.
Is that Janet?
It is.
Janet Roberts, welcome.
Thank you. Superintendent Ernst, President Smith, and trustees, thank you so much for having me. My name is Janet Roberts, and I am the gifted and talented lead over at Clayton Middle School. And my husband is also a GT teacher at the, uh, GT Institute at Hug High School. Clayton is unique. Our students don't just qualify for GT services simply because they got the right scores. Our students are also recommended by their former teachers, as well as their math scores. As a result, and also being at a Title I middle school, we see a very diverse population. So I'm here to advocate for making sure that GT funding remains. Um, if we think about GT and special education as a rainbow, those students can be all over the spectrum. They can be bright and gifted, but they can also come in needing ADHD services, dyslexia services. And as a result, we need to make sure that our students are getting the education that they deserve. Sometimes that looks like their kid is going to college classes in eighth grade. Those things happen, and we're able to provide it. Um, my frilegs or friends and colleagues, we send the average eighth grader being able to take four AP classes their freshman year. And not just simply take those classes, but excel. At the institute, we have over five National Merit scholarships that are GT confirmed. And that's only at Hug, I have no idea how big that number is across our district. One of the things that you might want to consider is the allocations. Whether or not I'm teaching only GT students, or my husband Keith is only teaching GT students, we also fill the need, the need of our school sites. So I'm still teaching speech and debate, my husband is also teaching the theater workshop class. Those allocations are going to be in our school district, no matter if they're magnet-specific or they are school-specific. We'd really like you to think about GT providing students not just with adequate educations, but excellence. Our students will do just fine in a regular class, they'll do fine in an honors class, but will they truly excel? Uh, based upon our ET, our AP attainment, our National Merit finalists, and also our dual-credit enrollment, I'd say that making sure that GT funding remains is something that we should definitely consider. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for introducing me to frilegs. I will be stealing that, and, uh, I will give you full credit every time Janet.
Pablo Navaduran.
I, I love it, like, you guys are knocking it out of the park with memorable things. Welcome Mr. Navaduran.
Hello guys, hello guys, my name is Pablo Navaduran. And, um, and I wanted to talk about, uh, Winona High School, what happened in the last week at Winona High School vandalism, because I am, I'm greatly to be substitute teacher at Winona High School, and thank you for, Winona High School and me for giving me opportunity to sub there, Winona High School. So, I want to talk about, I would commend, I condemn the violence of a Winona High School. Uh, that is, the student, eighteen students, including a few of them, are, I teach them. I do know their name, but I cannot tell you, so, I keep my mouth shut. Thank you, so... So, so the, so some of, um, some of the obvious things, senior prank, but I don't think it's not a senior prank at all. Uh, vandalism with hateful and anti-Semitic sort is unacceptable. And causing damage in a classroom, with the classroom, to a teacher who's been worked so hard, and that TV, the district will pay, it's causing, it's causing, it caused, caused money. And who go pay for the cost? Use the WC1 funds, or the, the district in generals, because the district cannot afford to pay another TV or computer laptop. Uh, any item that caused damage at Winona High School. Um, also, I don't think, an eighteen-year-old student who was, any student who responsible for that, uh, that incident should not be graduating from high school. It's a tenom, the, the polar, uh, and a seven, and a column, walk of shame. Uh, encouraged by RSS, so. Uh, RSS stands for Respect, Honor, and Strength. And that, incident, did not represent well, so, and go Huskies. Yep, um, by the way, I want to talk about why, why we learned from Von Mills School. I think the Von, Von combining, they had to do with the school naming, because there, those opportu, and those community doesn't get opportunity to name those, those schools, so, you know, no Von Mills School, you know, they don't like their, the name, you know, Tab Conference between New World and the Von Mills School, because they're been viral for a long time, so, I think the new school's name changing should be, have to do something for their community, so, thank you, Trustee Chrissy Hall for that.
Thank you, and definitely go Huskies. All right, are you gonna read who emails? Okay, so, if you have not spoken, before she reads the emails and I close the item, I won't be reopening it, so just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you. before she reads the emails and I close the item, I won't be reopening it, so just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you.
The board received emails from Amy Horvath, Jennifer Farrow, Ari, Ariann Saretta, Kai Real, Craig Burkhouse, Evie Murray, Elizabeth Bedard, Madison Bawarski, Keith Roberts, Herschel Murray, Eliana Murray, Elaine Faisal Sage, and Arabelle Murray.
Thank you very much, and thank you all so much for being here, truly. That now closes item six point zero one and moves us now to six point zero two, our next meeting announcement, which will be Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-five. And now, item six point zero three at six fifty-seven P M, adjournment. Thank you.